It's behind, let's go by that clock.
Okay, we're ready to get to city council meetings started right here in Spanish Fork City. Thank you everyone for joining us, especially for the kids joining us today. Welcome guys and gals, thanks for coming. Holy cow, it makes our, makes our meeting a lot better when people migrate over from the library to council meetings. Is that what happened? Because we'll take it, yeah, however we can get you, we'll take it. Thank you for being here. Like we always start our council meetings in Spanish Fork, we start them with a prayer or motivational thought, and then the pledge of allegiance. And tonight, Councilwoman Beck has the pledge, but first Councilman Carden has the prayer or motivational message.
It might be both.
Perfect.
So, I have a neighbor, his name is Landon Beeson, he just recently put in for the Freedom Festival speech, and I don't, essay contest, and won both of those, or at least placed in both of those. And so, he can give us a little piece of those, and then also give us a prayer, so.
Landon, I'll bite you up, come on up. That's what the kids are here for, Landon's here, alright, welcome, yes.
Alright, I might be a little short.
That's alright.
There was a man named William Faulkner, an American of course, and he said this message that says that we must be free, not because we claim freedom, but because we practice freedom. Today, we get to live in America, and we get to be free, not only because we claim it. There are some countries in the world that say, "Oh, we're free, we've practiced all these different things," but they actually don't, and that's why I'm so grateful that we get to live in America, and all these awesome places, that we can actually practice freedom, and not just talk about it. We have our rights to freedom of speech, and freedom of religion, and all those other rights mentioned in the Bill of Rights and the First Amendment. And because of that, we have choices, and our rights to go and live and use our agency. And that's why I'm so grateful to live in America, and especially to live here in Spanish Fork, where all you wonderful council members and everybody here contributes to their community, and actually practices our freedom, instead of just being a city where we could come to these council meetings and just talk about freedom, but we actually go out and help and serve in our community. Thomas Paine once said, "That although the flame of liberty may sometimes cease to shine, the coal may never expire." And I'm so grateful for what Spanish Fork and America is doing right now to tend the fire, and to keep it going, and remembering that although sometimes the flame isn't showing, sometimes we are focusing on our flaws too much, the coal still burns, and we have the opportunity to re-tend it and re-practice our freedoms. And so, I'm so grateful for that, and I thank you. Our dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be gathered together today in this council meeting, grateful for this wonderful city that we have the opportunity to live in, and for thy blessings, and on this nation, and on our state, and on this city. Please bless us that we'll be able to discuss all we need to in this meeting, and that we'll be able to come out stronger and more understood throughout our community. We're so grateful for each of these council members, for Mayor Mendenhall, and for Councilwoman Beck, for Councilman Carden, and for Councilman Argyle, and for Councilman Euler. Grateful for thy many blessings over us, heavenly Father, and for blessing us with good leaders and our agency to be able to choose them. So grateful for all thou hast done for us, heavenly Father, and we say these things in the name thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Well, before we stand, that was awesome. I think our city and country are in very good hands if we have youth out there like you. Thank you.
Great job.
And if anybody gets a chance to listen to his speech, it's called "The Butterfly Effect of Freedom" or the First Amendment, I can't remember which one it was called, but if you get a chance, it's about five minutes long, and he does it memorized, it's pretty amazing. So, it's on YouTube if you get a chance, and he's also in the Freedom Days magazine, so.
It was beautiful, Landon, tell us, what's your mom and dad's name? Who are your parents, come up here.
My mom right here is Kelsey Beeson, and then my dad's Garrett Beeson.
Alright, and your brothers and sisters, what are their names?
That one in the red polo over there is Tanner, and then we've got Eleonora, who's blonde, and then Nyla.
Alright.
And how old are you?
I'm about to be thirteen years old.
If Mayor Mendenhall can't come to our next meeting, are you available, by chance?
What are you doing next meeting? I'm out of town.
Landon, I think that it's probably a good segue to tell them what, something that you're interested in in doing in your life, go ahead and just tell them a little bit about it.
Recently, I've been taking speech and debate classes, and I've learned that I kind of really like politics, so if I ever get the chance, I hope to sit in one of your chairs, so.
We hope you do.
About five years, do you have to be eighteen, what do you have to be? Nick, is that what it is?
Eighteen.
Yeah, almost there, yeah. Good work.
Well, thank you.
Good work, Landon, good work mom, dad, good work, and it's a pleasure having you here. Thanks for that message, that was a great message, appreciate it.
Okay, next, will everyone rise and repeat the pledge after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it again for starting our meeting out that way, Landon, appreciate, appreciate you for bringing that, that part of the meeting to life there. Next is item C, follow-up comments. City manager parents, any follow-up comments from the last council meeting that we can touch on, or questions we can answer?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't believe we have any follow-up from a previous, maybe a council ago. We do have an item on the agenda that we'll follow up on that regarding the water conservation requirements. And so, I think is one of the first items in the new business that we're looking for there. So that'll, that'll pick up from a comment, I think by Emily Bourne, a couple of meetings ago.
Perfect, thank you. So, coming up in new business, item nine on our agenda, you'll see some of that information shared there from a couple of meetings ago. Takes us to item D, Spanish Fork University graduates. I think I see some of them out here, is that correct, Mr. Nick Porter?
Yeah, there's quite a few here. So, why don't you come on up, grads? While they're coming up, I'll just introduce, this is our fourth graduating class of Spanish Fork University 101, and our biggest graduating class. So they went through a ten-week program, ten Thursday nights in a row, where they met with different departments and divisions throughout the city, and really got a broad and wide view of who we are and what we do. They had a chance to do a lot of different activities with each department, a lot of demonstrations, and a lot of presentations, and just wanted to recognize them for their dedication, their sacrifice in participating, as well as recommend them as maybe potential candidates for different boards, commissions, assignments, focus groups. It's a group that understands more than most what the city does and who they are. So, I have a graduation photo I'll give to them, and then I wanted to have, he doesn't know this, but Darren come up and say a couple of things. He spoke at the graduation ceremony, so he at least has something prepared about, about his experience the last ten weeks. You're welcome.
Presser Darren, this is live, that's on YouTube, there's millions of people watching.
Wow, it's pretty hard to follow Landon after his comments, but I've got to tell you, I've really enjoyed this class, I've really enjoyed being a part of this group. There are some amazing individuals here in this group, and the classes, each one, each and every one has been amazing. I can tell you that I, my wife signed me up for this, I was not excited, I did not want to do it, and that's all we needed, was one more thing to do. And every single class, every single one was very interesting. I can tell you that we grew up in Boise, and we love Boise. We lived in Orem for about twenty-seven years, lived in Provo for a little bit, but Boise was always home. And moving here to Spanish Fork, we've been in Spanish Fork, Help Me Out Honey, four years, four years, and living here for about four years, and coming to these classes, I can say that we are finally home, and I sure appreciate all your staff that did all the classes, and I really cannot emphasize how impressed I was with the amount of work and dedication very few people are accomplishing. And each of those organizations was really amazing to me. I would think like our sanitation would have, you know, a hundred people, you know, our parks and rec should have three hundred people, and, and we don't. And that's amazing, because it looks amazing, it runs smoothly, and I really appreciated their personal, you could tell their personal dedication to the city and to what they were working on, and each one of them loved it. So, we had a lot of fun at the fire department, we had a lot of fun at the, at the, at the police department, but I really appreciated each and every, each and every one of the staff members and the divisions that took their time to show us what's going on. And I really appreciate them, and I really appreciate what they do now. And so, thank you, City Council, for the opportunity for us to do this. And we, I, I think I can speak for everyone, we say thank you, and we appreciate you, and we enjoyed it, and we learned a ton, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have another class in the fall, don't have the dates yet, we'll get those shared, and know there's a lot of other interest in being a part of this as well. So just again, thank you to each of you, congratulations. They got a class picture outside the chambers, let's, we'll do one more, so come on up, we'll get you up here. They also did a mock city council meeting, so they know that the rest of them can come and speak during public comments. Some of them enjoyed sitting in, in those chairs up there as well. But come on up, we'll get a photo, and then we'll keep moving. Alright, one, two, three. Thank you.
Good job, everyone. Guys, appreciate it. Great program, great people, thank you for participating, and now we're into to public comments. So, any of you that would like to speak, not just the Spanish Fork 101 graduates, but any, anybody from the public that would, would like to speak, you're more than welcome. Nick has got me a little reminder here, that in order to be considerate of everyone's time attending the meeting, and to follow the published agenda, public comments limited to three minutes, we're going to do a little bit better, keeping three minutes up there, so it just reminds you. And, and so, when we reach the three minutes, we'll kind of give you the signal on public comments. But be thinking graduates, would love to have you come up here, what's your, if I could ask a question of you, it would be, you know, what, what's your surprising takeaway, if you will? What, what did you think about some, some section of the city, and, and what surprised you maybe? So, I hope to hear from all of you. But, yes sir, you standing up first, you're up first today for public comment, please let Tara know your, your name, so she can get you in the record.
Yes, I'm James Westwater, a very happy resident of Spanish Fork, and I would like to compliment the city on being so well-run. You all are doing a very good job. And I would like to make a little announcement. There will be a town hall meeting on the controversial proposed Spanish Fork Inland Port project this Wednesday at seven PM in the Spanish Fork Library here in the multipurpose room. Speakers will include Ben Hart, Executive Director of the Utah Inland Port Authority, and Byron Adams, Biology Department Chair at BYU. And there will be several other speakers. After the presentations, there will be a Q and A session, where the public can ask questions about this controversial inland port project for Spanish Fork. There are many of us who have serious doubts about the viability, and the, the importance, and the, even the aspect of, of doing an inland port here in Spanish Fork. But we'll all have an opportunity to hear more about the pros and cons of this event on Wednesday at seven PM here in the public library, thank you.
Thank you, James, really quick, has that changed? I thought it was, my last email was Thursday.
I have it Thursday.
I have it on, I have it Thursday at seven PM here in the Heritage Room.
Mr. Westwater, might, might be Thurs, is Thursday the eighth? I think it's.
It's the eighth, you're right.
I think it's changed to Thursday.
Stand direct.
No, that's alright, yep, just in, in this Heritage Room, and, yep, held right next door. Okay, anybody else from the public? Yes?
Hi, I am Lillian Kumpf with Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantry. I'm going to try to be as quickly, quick as I can, we have a few things to announce.
You're, you're on the, you're next for Tabitha's Way, so you can.
Oh, sorry, I came up a little early.
No, no, you can, you can take a minute, you can, you can take a little bit longer if you'd like, you're on the agenda.
Okay. So, our pantry stats have, are showing, just so that you guys are aware, here in Spanish Fork, at the location where I'm at, we have had an increase in clients coming in, but donations have dwindled. A lot of this has to do with inflation, we have more clients coming in because of inflation, and then, you know, just the cost of everything has just gone up so much that a lot of these families that are coming in now are telling us, they've always given donations to a food pantry, but this is the first time they've actually had to come and be a client. With that, we had our statewide food drives that happened in March and in May, which was the Feed Utah Food Drive, there was the Scouting for Food Drive, and also the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive with USPS. And those donations were fifty percent less than what we received in the previous years. So, with that, all pantries across the state, we end up having, or summer is our, they are our lowest months of donations coming in, volunteers coming in, because it's when, you know, everyone's going and having vacation, having a good time, but, you know, we like to also just remind everyone that hunger does not go on vacation. We still have people in this community that are struggling to make ends meet. So with that, we are asking if there are any local businesses that would like to sign up to do a food drive during these summer months when things are a little slim for us, that would be so incredibly helpful. Also, those that are, that maybe have their own garden in their yards, you know, if they have any surplus of produce that comes out of those gardens this year, if they would consider donating that to Tabitha's Way. And as well as like, if you haven't already finished your planting, maybe even consider putting in an extra row of produce for us, that would just go a long way. We also did want to announce that we have our backpack giveaway event. It will be on July twenty-ninth, from nine AM to eleven AM. This year, it's going to be at Landmark High School, and that is for all low to moderate income families, anyone who is in need of backpack with school supplies can come and come to this event and get what they need for their kids. And then with that, I guess in addition, the last thing that we have to ask, which I've, I've already been starting in communications, is if there might be a possibility of having a city service project to maybe go along with yesterday's in the form of food drives to, to help promote and bring people, have people help bring some items over to our food pantry during yesterday's. And also maybe possibly try to help us celebrate the September eleventh statewide day of service as also a way of donating and doing a food drive during that time. We do have our most needed items that we always tended to run low on. These items, I'll just go ahead and state, so in case anyone's out listening and would like to donate some of these items, so like one bag pound of rice, or one, one pound bag of rice, dry pasta, one pound bag of dry beans, five pound bag of sugar, five pound bag of flour, cooking oil, those types of things that are staples in most people's kitchens. So, with that, I just thank you for letting me share with you guys, and I really hope that if, if anyone would like to help us with these endeavors, to please reach out to us, and we'll see what we can do to help these families and our communities who are struggling, so, thank you.
Lillian, can I ask you a question while you're up? Are, are you still doing the Give Butter, is that what it's called, campaign? Where people can set up or sign up for a monthly donation?
Oh yes, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yes, we do have a campaign going on right now. It is, I think it was actually inspired by our mayor. It is the Hamilton Challenge. The Hamilton bill is a ten-dollar bill, so if those that maybe want to help donate monthly, ten dollars monthly, that only equals a hundred and twenty dollars for a year, but it equals six hundred meals. We are able to offset our costs because of our donations that we get from our grocery stores, and with the volunteer work and everything, that we are able to provide a meal for only twenty cents. So, if you're able to help with signing up for this Hamilton Challenge, that's six hundred meals for a hundred and twenty dollars, which goes a long way, so.
Do you know how people would sign up for that, or they could go?
We do have it on our website, we also have that on our social media outlets. And then, if people are having a hard time finding those as well in those areas, you can always call in to our pantry, and our receptionist can help with sending that link out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks for all you do.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Lillian, appreciate your, your good efforts in a good local pantry here in Spanish Fork, so we appreciate you.
Mayor, one thought, as she was chatting, oh, she was sharing her, her comments. We, I know historically, we've done a food drive in the library, I think in February. We have kind of our Foods Refines, Library Lovers Month, or something like that. But with our brand-new library, and certainly an increase in, in, in people coming in, remember what the number was, I think it was seven thousand more patrons through the door in the month of May than ever before in, in this new building. Maybe there's something the library can do to create a place where people can come and donate some food, so I think that's worth looking at, and we can maybe look at a few other operations that we have where we might be able to encourage residents that we have a touch with to, to bring some food to us, that then we can transfer to Tabitha's Way. We, we won't even eat like the good stuff, we would give it all. Okay, maybe we'd steal a cookie or two, I don't know, I have to be honest, right? No, but I think there's something we could look at with this brand-new facility, and with the lot, the numbers of people that are coming in, maybe there's something we can parlay there for, on behalf of Tabitha's Way and the good work they're doing. It's really sad to hear that you're seeing fifty percent fewer donations. So that, I mean, it makes sense, but it's really sad, maybe we can do something there.
Yeah, good point, let's key in on the, on the synergy that we're creating right here downtown for the time being, and that your, your donations are down and your need is up is, is the wrong way for both of those. So, let's see what we can do to correct it as, as a partner here in the city. So, thank you, thank you for that. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, just wanted to, Eddis Hill, just wanted to take a second and really thank the mayor and the city council and actually staff just as much, because I think the river captains, is that what it was, river captains, kept us safe here in the, in the city, and the flooding was abated by a lot of hard work from the city staff, and from the council, and the mayor, and all the folks that helped out sandbags. So I just wanted to thank everyone here for that effort, because I know it's a lot of time for the city captains to get up at two o'clock in the morning to make sure the, the river wasn't overflowing, and so just wanted to thank all the hard work for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Eddis. Yes?
I'm Angela Eckhart, I actually was part of the Spanish Fork University program, and it was fabulous. I learned a lot, and I'm even more impressed with Spanish Fork than I used to be. I'm also working with the Youth Arts Festival and with the Arts Council, and we have Youth Arts Festival going on right now. We have, Councilman Carden has been invited to come down, but I just wanted to invite all of you, if you want to come down to Youth Arts Festival, come take a tour and see what's going on. We have about fifteen hundred students right now for this week and next week, who are doing theater, and cupcakes, and 3D printing, and all kinds of things happening down at the high school. So, we would love to have you come down and take a tour. My class is edible story art, and I'm still a little sticky from today, but if you want to come down and make a treat with us, you're welcome to come down and play Play-Doh and make a treat and see what's going on, so we would love to have you come visit.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it.
Treat's not from Play-Dohs.
Real treats?
Real treats. Edible treats. Perfect.
Yeah, the treat's not from Play-Dohs.
Yes.
Hi, you guys, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out for everybody here and the millions of watchers on YouTube. I wanted to encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity to take Spanish Fork University, it really was, we learned a lot, we had a lot of fun, too. We rode horses, and we spliced fibers at SFCN, we smashed car windows at the fire department. It really was a fantastic time learning about everything. So I would encourage anybody who has the opportunity to take the class. I receive compliments on behalf of Spanish Fork all the time doing what I do, and I have a much better understanding of why this place is so fantastic, and it really does start with the leaders, but also all of the members, that all the people that work for Spanish Fork are very passionate about their jobs, which is such a beautiful thing to see how well-staffed everyone is, to really love what they're doing, genuinely. And I was surprised, one of my biggest takeaways, I think, was what good actors, police officers are. I mean, they're like unshakable, so we went through like these mock situations, and they can play deranged people like you would not believe. I mean, you can't even break him out of character, we're dying. We're dying laughing, you know, just like, this is crazy. But they were, just did not break at all. So, fantastic, fantastic program you guys. Thank you for putting it on.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it.
One of my main takeaways from Spanish Fork University was, I loved that we could ask as many questions as we wanted. And I don't think ever, that there was ever one question that wasn't answered. It was just, you know, nothing was off limits, you know, and people were happy and excited, excited to tell us about their jobs. And, you know, to see like the electricity people, like getting little schoolboys, like, what else can we see if we can electrocute? You know, just, there's so many things that people are excited about their job, and I think that equates to being in a great city. So, thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else?
Tim Ingo, and thank you for inviting us up here. Another proud graduate of the university, and I, I can't, I just echo what's been said about this course. It's been fun, and yes, the police officers are very good actors. I enjoyed that. And as I was thinking about what I would say, I absolutely, I raised my family here. This is my home, my family's home, and I, I ran into a, a neighbor, well, I, I ran into a couple that had recently moved from Michigan into a new home, and they're in a new neighborhood, and they, as they were meeting their neighbors, they, they found a lot of neighbors that have been here for a lot of years, over 20 years, most of them. And the wife said, how comforting that was to know that people stick around in the city. And I, I agreed with her, yes, it's a great city. I think we're well-managed, and I'm really proud to be a Spanish Fork citizen here. And again, thank you for this opportunity to, to serve with the, or to attend the university. It was a really great experience, and I do encourage everybody to, to try to do that. It's a, it's a really good experience. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else? He's looking at you like half, half of, half of the family spoke. The other half needs to speak. Yeah?
It's gonna stay down.
Okay. It's gonna stay down. Okay. No more public comment? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all, especially you, you University 101 graduates. I can't thank you enough for the, the energy, the time commitment that you, you gave to yourself, but, but to your city there, and it, it truly is what, what you all said, that's the, that's the secret of Spanish Fork, is, yeah, good, good people that, that run the city, take their job seriously and are passionate about it, but then good volunteers that care enough to know about it and, and help lift in their community. So, so you are they. Just, yeah, don't, don't turn off your cellphones. We're gonna need you. We got committees and, and everything else that, that the city will always need you on. So, thank you. Thank you for going through that, and thank you for your comments today. We appreciate that. Okay, that takes us to council comments, and we're gonna go from right, my right, to, to left today. So we'll start with Councilman Euler for his council comments, and then go this way.
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing that I've got for tonight is, yesterday at the Senior Center, we held our last meal for the season. We had Dale and Bronco and Susan from the Parks and Rec Department come down and help dish up and serve some root beer floats for Father's Day, and the seniors really appreciated that. So we're taking a couple of months off. They'll be back starting August 7th. So if you're a senior that's home watching and you're wanting to come down and participate in the Senior Center, you can do that again beginning August 7th. So, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Argyle?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say to Landon, thank you for your comments. Thank you for bringing up our founding fathers. Keep that burning right here. That's, that's what we, what you're talking about is what, for over 200 years, has blessed this nation. Patriots like you who remember the founding documents and what they stand for and the freedoms they would give that we in this nation do not have. There is nowhere else in this world that has what we have here. And you know that, and you share that, and that's great. Thank you for your comments today. Also, I would like to thank, so we have our Memorial Day program. Thank the veterans for putting that on. We had, our ex-mayor spoke at that meeting, and he did a real awesome job and talked about some experiences and things that he had seen during his service. And as usual, they represent theirselves. Our flag, our founders' field, the flags that put in there, gets to be a bigger, bigger field. As they put them, it's nice to see those flags waving in our, in our wind, and I appreciate the time and the effort that it takes for them. A lot of them are getting old, older in their age, and so sometimes it takes them real difficult. We did little changes this year, and I don't think anybody even noticed what changed, but they did it because of some things that were happening with our elderly veterans. So, grateful for them, grateful for our cemetery staff. They made our cemetery look good, and when I walk there, I get more comments about how beautiful our cemetery is and continue. However, three, to increase from 3 to 500, Dale and Chris, that's, that's just a recommendation from somebody that took 101. That's not, I don't want to see that on our next Zermont thing that, hey, they said we need 500, even though you probably could use them and put them to work. But thanks for everything that they do up there. Our cemetery was in great shape, and our celebration was a, a good celebration that took place. But that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilwoman Beck?
I know we've already spent a lot of time on the Spanish Fork graduates, but since my husband was in the class, I thought I better take an extra moment. Oh, there he is.
Should we call him up here?
No. We, we don't like my husband with the microphone. But we liked my husband going to the class. It was kind of fun switching roles, and I'd say, what do you have going on tonight? And he says, oh, I have city stuff. I have city stuff I've got to go do. And I'm like, see you later. He, he works from home. I had to sign him up. I'm like, Chris, you've got to sign up for this class. He's like, ugh. Every time he came home, he loved it. He loved learning about it, and so, and going to a couple of the classes, it was fun to meet new faces myself. Thank you for taking 10 weeks of your time to engage in our community. It, it's from our residents that I think it starts with you. It's your knowledge, your volunteerism, your youth learning and serving and growing, and it just, it starts with you and comes up to the top to our city manager and staff, and we are blessed to live in a great community. So, thank you to all of the graduates. Our health fair usually is held in June, but they moved it to May. So it was a couple Saturdays ago. There were 750 residents that were able to participate. It opens with a mile run. Everyone that comes early enough gets a free t-shirt. We had 50 booths there, so people were getting swag, t-shirts, going to the booths, getting things there. We had Councilman Marshall up on the fire truck throwing swag out, lots of fabulous giveaways. But it was a really great opportunity for the, the community to come and connect and play together, learn more, more ways to take care of their mental health and physical health. So, thank you to the Parks and Rec Department, putting that on. That was a really fun event, and May was about 20 degrees cooler and much nicer than June. So, great job. And then just piggybacking a little bit on, on what Chad said about Memorial Day, I loved the angle of, I saw so many youth there. The Thursday before Memorial Day is when they set up Flanders Field, and so many Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, teenagers were there, helping the veterans set up the flag, all, all of the flags. How many were there? Do you know?
There's 1,500.
1,500?
13.
1,300. Okay. It was just so cool to see all of these youth engaging and learning, and I thought that that was a really important element of, of Memorial Day. And then, again, with former mayor Wayne Anderson being our keynote speaker that day, he was fabulous. He has served his country, his community, his family, just so many hours, and he had so much wisdom where he was just focusing on the one. So that was a really cool event. And, and finally, just, I wanted to give a shout out, this week is Miss Spanish, I mean, Miss Utah. It's the Miss Utah Competition. So our, our former Miss Spanish Fork Grace Ahinger is competing. It's kicking off tonight at the Show Me Your Shoes event that's over at the shops at the River Woods. And then the competition will be held at Capitol Theater on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, where the new Miss Utah will be announced. And she, she represented Spanish Fork so beautifully this past year. We just want to give her all of the best wishes and hope she has the time of her life this week. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Carden?
Yeah, first I'll invite Kathleen Lovett up to come talk about the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for the time, Councilman Carden. I didn't get my act together in, in time to get some photos over, but I just wanted to share a few events that we have coming up with the chamber. Starting off with June 8th, this Thursday at noon, we have a ribbon cutting for Purchase Green. We're kicking off our workshops with a two-part workshop series on business branding and intro to Canva. So that'll be two separate events, but they're paired together. So one of them will be about business branding, and then the other will be creating content for that brand. So those will be on June 14th from 3:00 to 4:30 PM, and then June 22nd from noon to 2:00 PM. And that includes on the 22nd, a one-hour kind of hands-on activity with some professional content creators, to make sure that people are leaving this workshop with created content ready to share on their social media. So, we're excited about that. That's gonna be at the Hampton Inn. Then on June 15th, we have our Noon Networking Luncheon. Safe Harbor will be presenting, and Chick-fil-A is sponsoring the lunch. That will also be at Hampton Inn. And then on June 23rd, we've got a ribbon cutting at noon for Prime Ivy. And that's what we've got going on this month with the chamber. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Kathleen. Just adding to what Kathleen said about the Chamber of Commerce, we had a meeting with city staff, with the police department, with the chamber, going over the Winter Lights Parade. Just as that event gets bigger, as things, we had a, a little bit of an incident this last year, just making sure that we're taking that, those things seriously, making sure that we're preparing for anything that could come, but also as it grows, how do we, how do we keep it safe? And I think we came up with a pretty good plan, details to come, because they're still being finalized, but we're already talking about the Winter Lights Parade. So, if you're thinking about it, you have plenty of time to make your float. So, that's our, that's our little pitch. On the airport board, they are getting ready to kick off the construction of the new taxiway. There's a lot of logistics that go into that, a lot of planning that's happening with that. So, those that are impacted will know what to do, because I don't know what taxiway to use, but they do. And so that is starting. Thank you to Councilman Euler for inviting me down to the Senior Center last Friday. We have a lot of active seniors at the Senior Center, and it is awesome. And then I got the opportunity to answer the hardball questions. Councilman Euler graciously turned that over to me, and there were some, there were some good ones. And still some answers that I've tried to reach out to one individual that I haven't been able to get a hold of, but, because I needed to get some more information. So, anyway, really, really fun event and a lot of lively discussions that happened there.
Just gotta add to that, Jesse did great. So he, he texted me beforehand and said, hey, are you going to the seniors today? I said, yes. Says, can I come down with you? I says, absolutely, I'd love to see you. So, he gets there, Beverly, one of our seniors that's over the meeting, says, hey, would he mind giving the prayer? And I said, yeah, I'll bet, I'll bet he'd love to. So he came up with me on stage, and, and usually we take some time to answer questions, and I just said, hey, how about we have Councilman Carden answer the questions tonight, or today? And he just, he rolled with it. He did great. So, thank you for, for kind of taking that on last, last second, surprised, but it was great. We were, they were glad to have you there.
It was good, and it's, they are very, you know, concerned and active about our city and want to know what's going on. So it's a good opportunity to, to share those insights. Along with, Angela already talked about it, but the Youth Arts Festival is in the middle of it, or a second day. We've made it through two days. The first day is always the crazy day, trying to get everybody to their classes, but it sounds like that happened, and everybody is happy and going, and they are there from about 9:00 AM to about 4:00 PM every day. Some of them are paid teachers, there's a lot of volunteers. The rock has been painted. Angela had a big hand in that. So thank you for all that everyone is doing to make that happen. It's, again, goes to what makes our city amazing, is the volunteers, the people who are willing to, to lift extra to make sure that our kids, our youth, have somewhere to go. And then just want to echo what has already been said about Memorial Day. What an awesome experience to see those that have served, get the opportunity to pay tribute to those who have passed away that served our country. And then Mayor Anderson talking about the one, the power of the one, the, how important it is to remember that, that the one is such a vital part of what we do. So, hopefully no one ever forgets that, that your one is just as important as another one. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. If you weren't aware, that, that's initiation at the, at the Senior Center, huh? You didn't know that was coming?
It was that initiation by fire.
Okay, good, good. Well, thank you, Nick. Good. We should give him some candy. Yeah. Hey, Landon, can we get a picture of you? Can we, can you come stand up in front of us before you go? We, we want Nick to, to grab a picture before you go. And, and one thing I wanted to say, Landon, before you leave, I, I had to get, for my day job, mayor's not a full-time position, so just know that for the, for five years when you're the mayor. But for my day job, I had to give a, a speech on leading, leading by example, last week. And, and what came to me as you were speaking here, is that leaders just don't speak up, but they show up, and they know the difference between the two. And that's, that's what come across while you're speaking, is, is not just somebody, in this day and age, you can talk to some, some, some older, older people, like Councilman Argyle, he likes, he likes when we reference him as old, but, but the day and age that we have today is that anybody can speak up at any time, on any subject, and technology's made that possible. But the real effective leaders, those who lead people by example and along with them, they don't just speak up, but they show up, and, and they do the work as well. And that feels a lot like what you're understanding here already, which is encouraging for a 13-year-old to know, because a lot of people just type stuff, they, they tweet stuff, they send stuff, and, and then they're not there when their community needs them, like these 101 graduates are. And so, it feels really encouraging, I know, to a lot of people, including us up here, that, that we have leaders that, that are ready to not just speak, but, but also show up. So, so thank you. Thank you, that was inspiring. And come up here, let's take a picture, Nick, we'll get it right here, so if you want to turn around, then we'll give you all your, all your younger siblings candy, so they don't sleep tonight.
One, two, three. Thank you. Landon? Here. Chad's already got it. Ready to go.
One thing that Landon didn't mention, or that we didn't mention, is that he is now going to meet with Mayor Kafusi, so.
Yeah.
He's got, he's got another engagement with another political leader.
More mayors? There you go. You can give, you can give them to your parents if you don't like them.
It's like Halloween.
There we go. Yes.
You're welcome. Tell Mayor Kafusi hi, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. Very good. Thank you for indulging us with a picture there, and starting our meeting off right. I made a note, we haven't said it yet, so we must have not missed him too much, but Councilman Marshall is not here. I know I can say that, because he's probably watching, right? But he's on a well-deserved vacation with his family, and, and he'll be back, he'll be back next time. So, we wish him safe travels as he makes his way back home to Spanish Fork later this week. I wanted to touch really quick, I should have made mention of this, when Mr. Westwater mentioned the meeting on Thursday here, that's not a, that's not our public meeting for the inland port, so you might see some things printed or in the news about the inland port, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, that's not our public meeting. We have public meetings coming up. That's a, a different organization that we've made the space available to them to come speak. Okay. So public, just be aware, if, if, you know, you're more than welcome to come. It's here at the library and you'll, you'll find it, uh, here on Thursday night. But the city council will have official, official public meetings on the inland port to discuss it further.
Yeah, this, this one's being hosted by a group called Conserve Utah Valley. So they're, they're the hosts, they're the moderators. They've invited those that are speaking, uh, including Dave Anderson. We'll spend just a few moments, but it's Conserve Utah Valley that's putting that on.
Now you might see some, a few of us elected officials here, if, if, if we can make it, but it, it won't be the public meeting that, that will happen, uh, because of the inland port, uh, discussion, uh, further on in, in future council meetings. So just wanted to make that note. Um, it's already been said, thank you, council, uh, for acknowledging and, and attending Memorial Day. Again, uh, you, you sit up there and I, and I know a lot of you will have this opportunity in the future, but when you sit up there and, and look over the people that, that come to that program and, uh, you know, and just the, the beautiful day that it is, whether it's rainy or, or, or the sun's out, it's just a, it's just a reminder of, of what Landon touched on there, that, uh, that we're a great city, we're a great city because of great sacrifice and, and, and the same goes for our great state and great country. So again, thank you to, to Mayor Wayne Anderson, thank you for your service, thank you to the American Legion, uh, thank you to the Veterans Council. Those, those guys are there every year and, and girls to, to honor, uh, that day and, and, and pay the respect. And it's, uh, it's just, it's just humbling to, to be a part of it and, and to see all of you there. So, so thank you, residents, for coming and, uh, thanks for everybody that put on the program. I sent, uh, Nick a few, uh, pictures about the stock show. I had an article in the Herald, in the Daily Herald that came out last week, uh, that I touched on. Nick was bugging me forever. It's, he's like, Mayor, it's, it's, it's the day, you gotta have this in. And then he's like, hey, it's past the day that you gotta have this in, um, which is, is a really good trait about Nick. But, um, but I forgot to mention this last council meeting. This has now happened, uh, in, in the middle of May. And it happens in the middle of May every single year in Spanish Fork for the last 99 years. So next year, you can see the sign there, uh, is advertising that it'll be 100 years next year of the, uh, the stock show, uh, in the junior livestock show in Spanish Fork. That's my niece Lydia on the left, that's my nephew JT Mendenhall on the right, and that is Lydia's champion, grand champion market gilt. Gilt a pig. Mr. Kevin, did you know that?
I did not know that.
You did not know that? Now you do, Councilman. Yeah, gilt is a, is a female pig and, and, and she showed that very well and, and won that, uh, won that award of grand champion. So super proud, they live out in Benjamin and, uh, and, and they do a lot of good work, uh, in, every year into their projects. They call these animal, animals projects, uh, that, uh, maybe that makes it less, um, I don't know. Lands, lands better when you send them to Circle V, I guess, in their projects.
Hey, I saw Charlotte's Web, you can't.
Yeah, okay, it happens. Yeah.
That's something.
But, but Lydia just did awesome, JT did as well, and every, um, you know, every junior livestock participant, I remember doing this as a, as a little kid out in Palmyra and thinking it was the coolest thing ever, and I was terrible at it, but man, there's kids that, that, that just put, put their work into this, their time, their money and effort. And, and Lydia and JT and, and everybody else did that at the, the stock show in, uh, in May. And so congratulations to them. The, the, the part of, um, when, when Nick was asking me for my article for the Herald, that, that all the mayors in Utah County put in periodically, this came to my mind and, and the, the, the entry to that article, uh, was, was something to the effect of, we're not your dad's Spanish Fork, but we're your mom's. And, and, and part of the reason, kind of being, um, flippant with that language, I guess, is that, hey, a lot of things have changed about Spanish Fork in 100 years. A lot have changed in the last 10 years, 20 years, and, and sometimes we get people asking us about that. How can we get back to what it was 20 years ago? And, uh, then we ask, how long you been here? Well, I've been here 18 years. Well, jeez, I'm glad we don't go back 20 years, you weren't even here, right? But, um, but, but 100 years, uh, is, is, um, is how long this livestock show's gone on. And it'll, it'll go for another 100 in Spanish Fork. You know why? Because it's the culture of Spanish Fork. Um, the, the agriculture heritage, the livestock heritage, uh, is something that, that will always be around in this city. And, uh, the judge that came from, uh, Oklahoma, uh, who spoke in a very, uh, I don't know what you'd call it, a very Midwestern accent, made a great statement that, uh, that was something to the effect of, uh, hey, that, that's a lot of work put into these projects, uh, but, but what a lot of, uh, good lessons these, these young folks are learning in, uh, in the work that they do. So, um, fantastic that they're not just raising beef and pigs, but they're raising kids with that stuff. And that'll always be part of, of Spanish Fork regardless of the next subdivision, regardless of, uh, of the next project here in town. We'll always have that agricultural heritage and I was sure proud of my niece and nephew, uh, participating in it, uh, this year. Last, and they'll be here with us next, uh, council meeting, and so I won't, I won't go too much into it, but in case, uh, you missed it, I, I know, um, I know Dale, uh, probably gets a tear in his eye when we talk about the Lady Dons, cause, cause he had a Lady Dawn not too, too long ago. How many years has that been? Two? Yeah, two lady? Who, which, what's your daughter's names that were both Lady Dons?
Cammie and Whitney.
Cammie and Whitney. And they were both pitchers?
Yeah, they're both pitchers.
And Shane Marshall couldn't hit their fastball either, just like, right? Yeah. Yeah. So the Lady Dons, um, if you didn't hear, the, uh, the fire trucks down Main Street, these are three Pete champions of Spanish Fork, state champions. Sure did their city proud. They, they are off, uh, still playing some softball and some other, uh, some other tournaments, uh, this week. And so they've asked if they can come next council meeting where we'll have them here and celebrate them and get a picture and, uh, and, and, and honor them for the great feat that they did. But again, I can't say enough, uh, about, uh, their run, um, about how proud this makes the city. Again, when people ask, hey, how do we, how do we stay a small town, a hometown, stuff like this? You win state championships and people come out on Main Street and yell for, for girls and, and, and guys that they don't even know. But, uh, but it's, uh, it sure was fun to see Coach Jarvis and her staff, uh, take care of business. That was their, that was their theme this year. And, uh, they sure did as they, uh, as they are three, three Pete champions, state champions in the state of Utah. Ranked high amongst the nation of, of softball teams. And, uh, and so we're super proud of them and look forward to, to honoring them, uh, in a, in a couple of weeks from now. I will tell you, Pete, uh, got a little bit of a video that I tried to say to, to Coach Jarvis, hey, I'll, I'll come pump those girls up if they need some help, you know? Cause they're not doing too well, I'll come, I'll come make them do well. That was kind of a joke and then she took me up on it and, uh, and I went down there and as soon as I looked up and speaking to these girls, I started bawling like a baby. He got it, he got it on.
Are we gonna see it?
Well, it's on YouTube, you can go watch it on YouTube, but no, we're not seeing it, Nick. But I saw my daughter, I saw, I saw two of my, you know, good friends', uh, daughters that are, that are on there. But, but man, you, you look in, you know, all of a sudden, when you're not prepared and you see these girls that are committed and about to go do their thing, holy cow, I don't know, it came over me, but I lost it. And so it must be a dad, a girl dad thing. Chris, he probably has that same kind of thing. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll honor them and, and, and just a great job coaching staff, great job girls, you should be super proud. And, uh, the whole community will celebrate you again in a couple of weeks. So anything else you guys have on that? Seth, did you, were you out of town or did you see that game?
I was here, I did not see the game, but I followed the updates.
You were following.
From both you and Councilman Carden and others.
Yeah. Travis, good job, you and Pete getting over there and kind of, you know, sneaking some footage, I think is how it went down. But, uh, but, uh, good, good work on, on catching some of that stuff too, because it's, uh, it's stuff that will go down in history, very cool stuff. Okay, anything else? Council members for council comments? Okay. Takes us to, to item number six, Spanish Fork 101. Uh, do we have somebody here to introduce us to our UDOT representatives? Mr. Chris Thompson? We're gonna hear from UDOT Center Street Interchange subject.
So we're really excited about this project, uh, having, uh, an interchange at Center Street and I-15. Uh, certainly would do a lot to help with the traffic problems we're having on, on Main Street. And, uh, uh, the legislature budgets money for us to do an environmental study, uh, which is pretty extensive, extensive. It takes a lot to, to really drill down on, on how an interchange should be built and the needs and, and, and that. And so, uh, uh, we have selected HDR as the consultant to do that environmental study. And we have Andrea here from HDR, she's a project manager with, with them. And we also have Darren Bunker, uh, with UDOT, who is also a project manager. And together they are, they're working on this project and, uh, we'll let them come and speak.
Mayor, I'm this, I'm Darren Bunker, uh, the project manager for UDOT. And I want to thank the HDR team and, and Wiley.
Wiley's the new.
He's, he's our new PI person in Region 3, so I haven't gotten to meet him very many times yet. He's been there for a couple of weeks, but appreciate you coming and supporting. I'm a little reticent because I'm about ready to sell my home after listening to all these speeches and move to Spanish Fork. But I'm afraid you may have run out of room by the time I come here with all the glowing records here. And I act, I actually do have a daughter that's gonna be moving here in a couple of months, so I'm really excited for her. As it was introduced, uh, there's a lot of growth here in Spanish, in the Spanish Fork area. And, uh, I also have to say that I really appreciate working with your staff. I meet with them almost on a daily basis, various staff members. And I can just tell you, I, I just enjoy working with them. They're great staff members. And, um, it's made my job a lot easier, uh, from a state perspective, to be able to work with such talented staff as, as you have. So, um, want to give those gudos there. So we appreciate the opportunity to provide this information to you. This is kind of a, uh, our kickoff to our public outreach, uh, for this project. And we're gonna be talking about our plan of gathering information, uh, for this project. And eventually we will publish the information we gather onto our public, uh, website, our project website. So there's no real need to take notes right now, uh, because all this stuff will be, uh, published out there for you. The other thing I'd want to mention is if you have questions as we move along, go ahead and interrupt and, and ask them as, as we go. Uh, and then at the end, we can, we can have a question, uh, period as well. So one of the missions of UDOT is to keep Utah moving. That includes the Spanish Fork area. And as I mentioned, it, it's growing all the time. Can I go to the next slide? Oh, right here? Okay. Let's see if this works. There we go. I, I love this slide, this is very indicative of your Main Street traffic that you see probably on a daily basis. And so one of the things that can help alleviate, uh, congestion on Main Street potentially is a, a new interchange on I-15. So that's the study we're doing. At the same time, there's another study, which is the Front Runner South Study that is studying the transit, um, access. And that's ongoing as well. We're coordinating with that team to look at a transit station in Spanish Fork. This project has been on the radar for some time. Uh, it's part of the MAG, uh, Regional Transportation Plan. And funding for this project is scheduled for Phase 2, which is the year's 20, uh, let's see, I'm gonna get this right. 2020 to 2030. Nope, is that right? 30 to 40, I thought that was wrong. So the, the funding for this project is 2030 to 2040. That may change. Sometimes projects get accelerated and sometimes projects get delayed, uh, in this plan. But for now, that's, that's what's in the plan. So let's look at that timeline. Okay? This is the typical project delivery process. Um, and right now we're in the environmental phase. So you can see that we're about midway through the project delivery process as a whole. A lot of times what we get as an input to the environmental process is a planning document. And MAG, uh, produced that planning document in 2012. And in that plan, they identified the need for a new interchange on I-15. And they identified specifically the Center Street, um, crossing as the, uh, location for that interchange. Typically, you want to think of the planning phase as a very high-level, uh, process. A lot of times it doesn't involve public input or, uh, communication with, uh, other stakeholders. Um, and so that's the type of document and information you get out of that phase, the planning phase. So the purpose of the environmental phase is to take that information from the planning phase as input to kick off a more in-depth analysis of the needs for the community. And we re, we, we reevaluate those needs with current data and we get requests and consider public and agency input. We also follow what is called the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. The Environmental Assessment, or NEPA, is a study that requires decision-makers to consider agency and public input and evaluate potential impacts before we make any decisions. So a lot of times what you will see is, um, as, as a project team, you'll see us kind of avoiding specific names like the Center Street Interchange. Because as part of the process, we have to consider all the options. We, we want to take the opportunity to hear from the public, to hear from you, to hear from the businesses and, and, and the community and see if there aren't even better ideas that come forward than what were presented in the planning phase. So as part of NEPA, UDOT has what we call a NEPA assignment. A lot of states don't have that. And what that means is that UDOT can actually make the decision of where that location is. So we don't have to wait for, um, FHWA to make the decision, whether we can make that decision, uh, through our assignment. As such, we're required to follow their process, um, because it changes the access to I-15. It qualifies as a federal action. It also enables us to receive federal funding in the future. At the end of the NEPA process, uh, it'll be UDOT that issues a decision on the preferred alternative. Following that decision, we can then move forward to the design and the construction phases. For this project, um, what you see in the gray area is the area that we have identified as the study area. So you can see that this expands well beyond just the Center Street crossing of I-15. One of the reasons for this is we want to take a look at all the, all the, uh, traffic impacts that could potentially, uh, contribute to, to the need for this project. So we will be evaluating, uh, several different interchange locations between Main Street and 800 South, which is the Benjamin exit, including the 400 North Crossing, uh, Center Street, 100 South and 900 South. We're currently conducting a traffic analysis to capture updated traffic counts and socioeconomic projections through 20, through the year 2050. As mentioned earlier, the, uh, Spanish Fork Transportation Study was completed by MAG in 2012 and it recommended the Center Street, uh, location to be the interchange. But this study will help us inform, um, inform us about, uh, the needs and objectives of this project. And so we will not only rely on the decisions that came out of the planning phase, but we will rely on, uh, other input that we gather through this process. In other words, we don't yet know where the inter, what the location of the interchange will be. In addition, the study area itself may change as we move through this process and identify needs and, uh, requirements for this, to, for this project. And at that point, we will move through alternative development and screening phases and then narrow in on a specific interchange location. So let's look at, at the schedule for the. So let's look at, at the schedule for the environmental phase of this project. This project represents an overview of the NEPA process, the phases and general timeframe. We anticipate that we're going to take probably about 18 months for this process with a decision sometime in the fall of 2024. Without going into too much detail, here's a couple of important things to note. During this process, there are two times when we will engage the public. The first set of meetings will be during this current phase, which is the scoping phase. We already have these meetings set up, and I'll get that, to that in a minute. And the second meetings are going to be during the published EA phase, more towards the end. And at that time, we will actually be presenting the results of our analysis and then presenting the preferred alternative in those meetings. In each one of these, in each of the NEPA scoping and public EA phases, there will be a 30-day public comment period where we, we will be receiving formal comments from stakeholders and the public. Right now, we're starting the scoping phase, which is information gathering such as traffic analysis that I mentioned before. And we'll be seeking public and stakeholder agency input to identify the problems and the needs that should be addressed. Range of alternatives will be identified and considered, and we'll set the scope of the issues that need to be addressed. After scoping, then we will develop a purpose and need. That's the second, I think there's a laser pointer on here. Is this the laser pointer right there on the top?
Yes.
So the next phase is to determine the purpose and need, where we will identify the problems that we're trying to solve with this project. And we will be collecting the data that will back up the need for solving that issue, those issues. After that, after the purpose and need is clearly identified, we'll move into looking at all the different alternatives that are, are possible and doing what we call a screening. The first level of screening of all the options that come up will be focused on the transportation needs. And one of the things that you ought to understand about that is, one of the options that we consider is called the no-build option. This option identifies what would happen if we didn't do anything. And that's kind of the baseline for helping us to understand the need for the project. And so the, the do-nothing option is one of those options that we consider. Now, once the options are narrowed down from, from several to just a handful, then we start to dig deeper into them. And we go into a second phase of screening. And this is to look at the impacts to key resources, things like, the things that have strong regulatory protections on them, things like wetlands, public parks, recreation, wildlife, refugees, national register, historic sites, and so forth. This detailed analysis provides us with a basis for selecting the preferred alternative. At this point, we publish the EA. And as I mentioned, we're going to be doing that sometime in the spring or summer of 2024 and provide a 30-day comment period at that time. The last step will be to actually publish our decision. And we anticipate doing that in the fall of 2024. So on to what we're here today for is to kick off this, this public gathering, public input gathering process. And so here are the details for the first public meetings. As you see, we've got them scheduled for the end of this month. The first one will be June 26th. That will be a virtual meeting. And we'll have a, a short presentation on that Zoom meeting, followed by a period of time where we can receive questions and provide answers to the public. The next meeting will be the following day here in this building across the hall. All this, all of our staff will be here. As I mentioned earlier, we have these, South Valley Transit Study going on. They will also have a representative there. So we will, we will have some boards and some diagrams. The people can come in. It's kind of an open house format where they can come in and ask questions. They, they can provide comments at that point, and we will take them. Both meetings will have the same information, so your citizens can come to either or both of, of those meetings as they desire. And so that'll be a great chant, an opportunity to start a public comment period. So let's get into what that comment period goal is, okay? Although we will be open to receiving comments from the public throughout the entire EA process, only the comments that are provided during this public comment period are the ones that will be actually addressed. And, and we will go through each one of the comments one by one and determine if they can contribute to this, to the solutions that we're looking for. The types of comments that we will be looking for are those that look at the transporta- transportation needs of the community. For example, you know, will, will this project address congestion on Main Street, right? Maybe somebody will have a great idea in your community on, on how that can happen between those projects. We're open to having people provide input on the type of screening criteria that we should use to whittle down the projects, what issues and resources are important to the community that the project might impact, and different alternatives that we might consider. So these are the kinds of questions and comments that, that help this project move along. These will also contribute to what we are calling a frequently asked questions. And we will be putting those on our, on our project website. And so a lot of people will just be able to go to the website and say, oh, okay, here's all the questions that everybody in the community's been asking, and we'll have the answers to those questions there. Okay? And so how do we plan on engaging the community? We're aware of your Fiestas coming up, and what you see on the screen here is a flyer that we will be putting in your Fiestas magazine, which will be encouraging people to comment on this. Oh, and by the way, isn't the Crash Derby during the same time?
Yes, a couple of weeks later.
August.
Yeah. That is one of the best events. Everybody's got to go to that. That is so fun. But anyway, the public comments are very important to this process. They help us understand the needs and concerns of the community. Anybody can provide comments to us. And, and as I mentioned, we will address all the comments, but the ones from June 26th to July 26th are the ones that will actually become part of the EA record. Let's see. Would also like to give a shout-out to Nick. He has been really helpful in identifying the communication channels for the project. He, he was helpful in setting up this meeting tonight. He let us know that you have a community of people that are set up to take surveys. So we have a set of survey questions, which he'll be distributing to about 1,200 people to begin with. He's going to be highlighting this project on the next roadshow that they have, which is a, which is, you know, a consistent activity that they do for transportation-related project in the city. We're going to be including an article in the July newsletter that you send out, and he'll be helping to publish our social media posts as well. Appreciate your help, Nick. We will also be using paid social ads to target Spanish Fork residents and promote the meetings and the two comment periods that we've talked about. We're also going to be putting together a, what we call a stakeholder working group. This group will be a cross-section of people who represent the community, including volunteers, people from the school district, business owners, residents, government officials. We're going to ask them to actually review some of our information in advance and make comments on that information. And we're going to be meeting with them on July 12th in our first stakeholder meeting group. So with all of these efforts, we feel like we're going to be able to reach out to the community and get good feedback from them. And they'll have plenty of opportunity to provide input. And so speaking of public comments, these are all the different methods that we can be reached. Again, all these, all this information will be on our website that we'll provide to you. So email, phone, regular mail, and our project website. So that's what we have for tonight. And do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for, for Darren? Was Andrea here with you? Did she need to give the, okay.
Andrea, did you want to?
She's saying no. But yeah, any questions for, for Darren or UDOT on this project?
Darren, I've got a question for you about another project just north of this one potentially. And if you've got any information or timelines on the north Spanish Fork interchange that's, that's going in. I know a lot of people have asked me, not seen any construction start yet. They're kind of curious about the timeline on that interchange.
Yeah, so we're, we're closing out, so, so that project is, has two construction phases on it. The first phase, we will reroute all the frontage roads and build the overburden for the ramps on the north side of the interchange. And I'm anticipating that we'll probably send that out to advertising in about eight weeks from now. So you should see dirt moving by the end of the year on, on that first phase. The second phase will kick off shortly after that. We're shooting for October, but I'm thinking because of right-of-way challenges, and you guys have experienced those, that we're probably going to be pushing into the December-January timeframe for advertising phase two, which will be the rest of it. That will include expanding the 1600, the 2,700 North Corridor to five lanes from Main Street in Spanish Fork all the way out to SR-51. The project also includes a bridge over the sharp rail lines, so you won't have to stop at that, at that particular crossing like you do today. And so it'll be, it'll be a fantastic project.
Great, thank you. Just in case the public, the north interchange are talking about Santana Raceway.
Yes.
Santana Raceway, yeah.
Now, another, I'll, I'll interject here. Another project that's going to impact your community is the project on US-6 from the, from the freeway to expressway lane, right down there in that, in the middle of all that traffic. What we're doing there is we're actually adding two left, left-hand turn lanes at each one of the, on each one of the legs of each of those intersections. So it's probably good to start preparing your, your citizens for some extra congestion when that project starts to happen. And we're going to be starting on that this fall as well. It's already out to advertisement, and so we'll be awarding that contract in about six weeks.
We never hear anything from our residents about that area. They're really.
I'm sure you haven't.
Never, on, on weekends.
Other than they avoid it, right?
From the county.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Darren, any, anything else? When you say alternatives to, to Center Street and Spanish Fork, I mean, that's in our general plan, has been for a long time. I think one of the first things I remember eight, nine years ago, being elected here as a councilman, was the discussion of a pretty large industrial user out by the freeway that we've worked hard with, that uses a rail spur out there, found a different location. The public's money, the effort, has been spent there to relocate a business. It sure seems like in our general planning that I've seen, that's, that is the area of, of a, of an interchange that, that makes a whole lot of sense with the ground that has been acquired and all the, the planning that's went into it. What, what do you think a reasonable alternative, not, not asking you to maybe prognosticate that, but in the studies that we're talking about, what, what can some of our residents expect to, to see in some of the material of, hey, if it's not a Center Street exit, it's this?
Yeah, so one of the challenges we have in that area is SR-115, I think. It comes from the, comes from the west side of the freeway, comes under I-15, and then kind of swings up around the, the business that you're talking about. So one of the challenges is how do you incorporate that into that interchange design? And so the interchange may end up being like a split interchange where you get off at one location, but you get on at a different location. It could end up being something like that. From a professional perspective, it makes sense for the interchange to be potentially at Center Street because you've got a, a regional corridor that kind of goes out to US-6 along, along there as well. So all of these things, all these thoughts will go into that alternatives development, and then subsequently, the screening criteria. And so, so, so those are the types of, when, when we mention we want input on what kind of screening criteria we should use, those are the types of things we're looking for. Like, have you thought about the impact of, of this particular element of our city, right? And, and we think that that element should be part of your screening criteria. And, and so one of the things we have to be careful of, we can't predetermine a solution because if we do, then that negates our responsibility in the NEPA process. And that, that would jeopardize our funding and our, and our NEPA assignment. So we have to go about this in a very, a very serious and methodological manner.
And freeway interchanges aren't cheap, is what you're saying.
And they're not cheap.
I totally understand that method. I would like to go on record that I would love to stick with the master plan and stick with Center Street as you're gathering information. Like Mayor has said, we've spent a lot of time and years and energy in planning for the next 10, 20, 30 years with that in mind, so.
Yes, and I, I am aware of those efforts. And I, I want to give kudos to specifically Chris and his staff for going through those efforts. I've been a project manager for the last four years, so I have been involved in those discussions. And so I'm fully aware of the effort that has been made to make this happen. And the, the things that you've done to make this possible, a lot of cities don't have that foresight. And so kudos to you for, for doing that. And that will, that, those efforts will be considered.
And I think adding to that, right, is our historic Main Street and, and the efforts that we went through with different organizations, I believe, including UDOT, to make sure that we've planned for what that looks like. And I'm assuming that the business community would go about giving their comments the same way because there's a lot of stakeholders that would have some, some thoughts on that as well, right?
Yep. And that is actually another, so, so you're talking about the vision study for Main Street. The first phase of that study is actually kicking off as well, right? So you've got a lot of stuff going on. You've got interchange to the north, you've got US-6, you've got Main Street, and then this potential new interchange. So that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of planning and a lot of work and a lot of help that we're going to need from the community to accomplish all of that in a fairly short period of time. So we want to recognize your efforts.
And I think adding to what Mayor said earlier, right, not, this is one of those times where we need to show up and we need to make sure we're speaking out both.
Yes.
To make sure that our voices are heard.
Yeah, I think this is important for our citizens and our businesses in, in Spanish Fork, that, you know, our, our motto of pride and progress, progress is going to happen and, and we don't want it to happen to us, we want to be part of it. And so hopefully, the efforts that, that we've planned for in years to come, or years prior to this and years to come, show a, a more than a good faith effort of us trying to plan for that progress rather than it just happening to us because we've all been in communities where maybe it feels like it's, it's happened to them.
Exactly.
And, and so we want to be intentional about what we do there. Do you think Shane intentionally missed this meeting, speaking about intentional?
Oh, he's dying that he's not here.
Yeah, yeah.
He probably didn't want to be embarrassed.
No.
Shane's awesome.
Anything else for Darren?
Well, thank you, thanks Darren. Just remember, Spanish Fork's more important than Washington County, so any funding that we can get prioritized. Let's take care of that.
There you go. I'll be fighting for it. Appreciate you, Darren. Thanks for working with our staff and, and the city as a whole. We appreciate your efforts and.
They're awesome.
We'll be here as partners going forward.
You know, as a PM, you're not supposed to have favorite cities.
But you can say it.
But just like, I think this is a private meeting, right? So I can say that.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Darren, we'll assign somebody to help you find a home. We've got a couple of people, experts in.
We've got a couple of people, experts in that, we'll, we'll get you taken care of.
We'll make sure to, Nick, just like was, was mentioned by Darren, share that information out to the public, so they know that the, the public meeting's coming up and how to share your input. This is an important, you'll hear it from your elected leaders here locally too, that this is an important time to speak up and show up and, and make your voice heard, so we can, we can shape what comes, because it's a big deal for us. Now, thank you, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else for item number six, Spanish Fork One-on-One, we'll, we'll go to item seven, consent items. Any questions on the consent items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve consent items A through I.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
The counts, the consent items are approved. Takes us to item number eight, a public hearing for tonight, one of our, we have a few public hearings from our RDA and LBA agendas as well. But this first one, the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget.
So we, we had a presentation, we presented the tentative budget, the first council meeting in May, so it's been on our webpage for the past month. So I won't rehash what I presented in May. This is a chance to, for the public to speak to the budget, and then in two weeks, we will formally adopt the budget. Yeah. Did that, where'd Nick run off to?
It's not working.
He, this just isn't the slide I was looking for.
The presentation.
Blah, 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 blah.
He's coming. He was coming.
Yeah, he's, he's got the wrong...
Lady Dons would call it a designated hitter, Tyler, no pressure, but we need you.
Travis is back there dying because we're live.
Yeah.
Nah, he's all right.
Viewers dropping off.
You know what, that, I've made a mistake. Okay. You can, now that is the right one. Seth and I, I think the slide you and I were looking at was last year's slide.
Is this the right slide?
Yeah, yeah, you can just bring that one up, Tyler.
Is this the right slide?
Yeah, just go to that second slide on the top.
Is this the right?
Yeah. All right. So this shows the total budget for next year, 203 million. 38 million of that being in the general fund, 138 million of that being in the enterprise fund, and 25 million being in miscellaneous capital project funds and those type of funds. Of that 138 million, I want to think about half of that is the construction of the sewer plant. So that's a big portion of it. Yeah, but do you have any questions about the budget before we move on to the public hearing?
Any questions for Jordan yet?
Nope.
Not yet?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I might call you back up. Anything before we go into public hearing? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into public hearing for item 8A. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're in public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the budget?
203 million and no one wants, has a question?
You're here.
Well, that's great.
What was it, what was it back in the day, Matt?
Oh, jeez.
It's been a few years since you were councilman, what was it?
It seemed like the same amount of slides, or pages.
Just more zeros?
Just a bigger number, yeah.
Just more zeros, yeah.
I don't even know. Probably 30 million, I don't know. So just a, just a few questions. On the page, we don't need to go to it, the first page of the, Seth, his little letter to you guys where it talks about interest earnings. When I looked, went through the budget, that, there's quite a bit of interest earnings. How, how does that work? I don't know if you can answer right now, or if somebody wants to make a list to answer. Because that seems like, there's quite a bit of money in interest earnings, which is great. I'm just wondering how that all works, if the, the bond money sits somewhere and earns money, or, I mean, anyway. The next question is, I noticed there's going to be some increases in the monthly utility But at the same time, there's a serious amount of money that gets transferred from the utilities, enterprise funds into the general fund, so if, even though they're, they might be down, there's still significant revenues from those, why would we need to increase them going forward? There was, it said somewhere in the, in the budget about the tax rate, you guys are going to set a new tax rate. It didn't show what the number was, so I'm hoping we address what that tax rate might be, if there's a rate increase, and why that would be. The Power Corridor Park, it seems like that's already been under construction, if somebody can clarify that. It looks like we're going to continue that. So my question on that was, it looks like the city's been doing the landscaping on that, not a third party or a contractor, if that's the case. I'm just curious how, why we wouldn't want a contractor doing it, where they're bonded and insured, and it seems like it could have been done quicker, but I, like I say, I don't know for sure. I'm just wondering about the, the cost impact by not having a contractor do that. Curious when the, when and if the state law changed to allow us to do SFCN outside the city. I noticed somewhere in there, with Mapleton, Salem, we're going to offer the service to them, but I'm not, I can't remember. When we started SFCN, that was, it seemed like we got in like the last 30 days before the state shut that down. And thanks to Kevin's dad pulling the trigger on that, that's huge. But I didn't know that it had been changed to allow us to do that, which is great, because that's a huge revenue generator. I'm just curious when, when that happened. And then on impact fees, if there's been a decision on the final impact fee for fiscal year 2004, and if we're going to continue with the, it seems like we have several impact fee increases throughout the year. I know that's up to the cities, but it seems like some cities try to do that not as frequent. I know we try to stay up on it, but if we've spent so much money on an impact fee study, it seems like we should be able to track it, so it's not such an impact, no pun intended, on new construction. So just curious on those, those are my main questions, so if somebody took note of those, so we can, that'd be great. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you, Matt. Anyone else for public comments on the 2024 budget? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden to close the public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion back up here after the public hearing has been closed. Number of questions here by Mr. Barber. I'm sure somebody wrote them down, we might be going to different departments for some of these. Any discussion, counsel, before some of the questions there, or maybe that'll peak some of the discussion?
Let me answer some of those.
Yeah, I comment, or I jot it down, I think most of them, I think I can answer them all. First of all, the interest earnings is, it's a, in the general fund and across all funds, it's actually on what you would, what you would call maybe our savings, so our own funds that are held in reserves, so in the general fund, the fund balance, and in the utilities, what we call cash reserves. Those are separate from what we would call bond holdings that we might be collecting interest on as well. So we, we are generating interest in, in state mandated funds, state mandated, what is it called, the Money Management Act requires that we put those, our, our funds are, are reserves, if you will, in different accounts, and they follow the Fed, they're usually a little bit below the Fed, right, but they follow the Fed. So two years ago, we were earning interest at about a half a percent, and now we're getting interest somewhere close to four. And so that, those are tracked individually by fund. So there's, you know, whatever percentage of the interest earned goes into the general fund as, as a revenue source, same thing with water, sewer, power. If there are bonds that are outstanding, or sorry, if there are bonds that we have money received but we haven't spent yet, say for example, we're building the SFCN building, and we've bonded for that, but we're sitting on $7 million unspent at the moment, that's sitting in a bank account. If it's earning interest, depending on certain rules, if it earns interest in a certain manner, we can use those interest earnings also for that same project. If it earns too much interest, then we come into different arbitrage laws as well, as the public might come into those in certain settings, so we have to watch that. But generally speaking, what I was referring to in that letter is, is what's in our, interest earnings on our savings accounts, if you will, our, our reserves in each of those different funds. And when you go from a half a percent to 4%, the, the growth on those revenues becomes quite significant, and in a great way today. In a few years, when those rates go back down, it'll hurt, because our, you know, that revenue line will go the other way. So we've targeted those funds for more one-time projects as opposed to ongoing, because we know that that has somewhat of a cyclical cycle to it. Did I just double use a word?
Yep, cyclical cycle.
All right.
Hey Seth, along that.
Yeah.
As well, last year, we voted to, to raise the rate for the property tax to fund the rec center, right? But we've not started construction on the rec center, yet we've been bringing in those revenues. I'd assume that those are part of these funds that we're getting interest rates, getting interest on, or is that separate?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And so the, the dollars from that have been going into the capital project fund for the rec center already, so those monies are going there and, and are part of the beginnings of the money we're spending on, on that project before we bond. So that money's going to that project already. And yeah, if there are, if there are revenues, interest on those monies, then they would go there as well. Question about utility rates and, and the dividend, we've, we do have our dividend that, that we have, that practice we have followed. Candidly, the, the percent of the dividend has gone down a little bit over the last couple of years. We've mostly held that dividend steady, which means that as the different funds grow, that the percent's actually going down. The utility rates are just tracking with our different utility studies based on projects and, and costs, independent of what inflation is doing, but certainly influenced by inflation. We've talked in our previous meetings, what we presented in the tentative budget, and in some of our one-on-one budget meetings that I've had with you, some discussions about what, what the interest rates, sorry, what the utility rates you'd like to see. And I anticipate that with the next, with the approval of the budget, we'll have slightly different rates than what was presented in, that the rates would be slightly less of an increase versus what was presented in our, in the tentative budget in May. I thought I said somewhere in the letter, but I'm not seeing it, that this budget present, this budget does not have a tax increase. We don't yet have our interest rate, sorry, our property tax rate from Utah County there, the ones that assigned that to us. I think we're guessing right now, because they, they've given us some preliminary, let's call it four of eight data points in, in their process to give us the certified tax rate, but it's just a, it's really just a mathematical equation, our rate will go from .001111, and it will drop probably to somewhere in the 0010. So let's call it somewhere in 11 down to 10 range. But in essence, what that is saying is, we're not raising our property tax rate based on state laws, the rate will just fall based on the truth and taxation process. And we should have that rate for the next meeting when we adopt the budget. I think they said they'd have us the data that we need to then give back information that they need today or tomorrow, and so they'll have a few days to work on whatever, and then we'll get that back. But I, I would see, I would estimate at this point that our rate would look like something in the 10 range versus where today, I think it's in the 11 range. Electric park, that is ongoing, it crosses over fiscal years. The work that you're seeing being done right now is actually done by a private contractor. We'll just do the landscaping when they're done. So a lot of cement work, asphalt work, fence work, park, pickleball courts in that area, pavilions are up, bathroom facilities are up. They have until July 15 to finish their work, and then we'll take over the landscaping after that. We've come to, we've come to experiences, we build our parks, that when we build, when we build our landscaping, our people are able to build it how we want to maintain it, and so we know where the heads are, we know how they're built, they use the, you know, even though we spec it, sometimes it's just built differently, because the guy's reading the plans, and then they put the plans down and they build it. Our people build it to the standards that we want and, and can use, and, and in the end, it does save us money as we do the landscaping part of it. The work that you've been seeing has been done by a private contractor, and they have until July 1. Dale, you want to add anything else on the electric park?
Yeah, I guess, were you talking about the power corridor or electric park? Did I misunderstand?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about power park, electric park.
Yeah. Same concept, basically, with the power corridor. We, we, we recognize savings of 45% to 55% when we do it ourselves, in-house. That doesn't always result in the fastest work done, but it certainly is a higher quality from our, our perspective, better control over the project, no contracts, change orders, those types of things. So wherever possible, we try to, we try to do projects in-house with our projects crews. And, and we do, I recognize the savings, but it doesn't, it isn't always the fastest way to do it, that's correct.
So when we do have speed, as, that is important, then we do hire those out. But there are some projects where time isn't quite of the essence, and we're able to realize some savings. Thanks for that, catching that location, and totally different park, totally different, it's in the same area, and they will eventually connect via, via the trail system that's built there. You asked about the law for providing services out, outside the city. There is, actually hasn't been a law change, what we're doing is providing a wholesale service to the city, so we're, we're in essence their, their internet bandwidth provider, and not, we aren't providing any services to residents within those communities, so they have a connection to our head end, and they pay a monthly service fee, and it's really not that much money that we're generating from them. It certainly is above and over any of our costs, so there is revenue, net revenue to us, but it's really not that big of a revenue source for us. But they are, we are providing, we are a second internet service provider, bandwidth provider for them, and we imagine and, and understand that within a few years, that will go away while they get more of their infrastructure built out and have better connections to the outside world. But in the meantime, we're just a wholesale connection point for them to get to the internet, and then they're, they're building their infrastructure around that. So we aren't, we aren't an end provider to any one resident within those two cities. So no state law change there, just the ability for them to connect to our, our head end and access the world through that.
Seth, he mentioned like a deadline, there was one, I think in 2001, and I know Salem City triggered that, they passed a resolution before that deadline.
Oh, did they? Oh, thank you, I didn't know that.
So I imagine Mapleton did a similar thing, but I don't know for sure.
Thank you. And then the last one, impact fees, actually, this is something that's really important to us, and we do update our impact fees every year, but only once a year. And that is something that's important to us, to stay connected to current costs, and, and because we've spent money on our impact fee system and have a base that is, a foundation that is solid with a lot of good information, where we can simply update data points, and then it, the formulas, if you will, spit out new, new fees every year, some go up, some go down, and it keeps us current, as certainly this last year will, anybody can relate and understand how costs have increased for roads and... year will, anybody can relate and understand how costs have increased for roads and, and land and, and pipes in the ground, et cetera. So this is something that we, we think every city should do in keeping their impact fees updated every year. If, we believe, you know, as, as staff, we believe that if, if the city hasn't updated their impact fees for, you know, let's say five years, then they're not, they either were charging way too much five years ago and are just about right today, or they're undercharging and will, will have a problem as they go to do some of the projects that they say they're going to try to do. So we do update our fees once a year, but only once a year. We do it about this time, so they're effective about the beginning of the fiscal year. And that's something that's, I think, really important to, to our engineering department and each of the utilities, so that they're current with those costs. I don't know if that was responsive to that final question, I think, I think it was. But in terms of just the simple philosophy, we do update those every year and, but only once a year. Those were the notes I took. You certainly can add any, any other thoughts or philosophical points you want to add. I can answer any other questions that, that you have.
Any other questions for Seth, staff on these items, on the budget?
I just want to quickly reiterate that we may not be asking questions right here in public, but we each have had a one-on-one meeting that Seth mentioned, where we've gone in for two hours and, and gone over it and asked our questions. So I just want to reiterate that as the public is looking at us like, wow, there's a $203 million budget, and they're not asking anything, because we've had months to ask our questions. So thanks for your time on this, Seth.
Yeah, absolutely, and certainly not me. This is a, this is every director's favorite, favorite thing of the year.
I doubt that.
No, they, this is what they live for, and...
True?
Chris?
No.
Jordan, can I put, can I put you on the spot? As the finance directors, you've looked over the, the budget for the upcoming year. What are things you see that you, that you like, that you see is doing, are going well for the city? What are things that maybe you're saying, oh, this, this could become a concern?
Right. Sales tax is a concern. We grouped our sales tax into different categories, and the two categories struggling right now are building supplies and car sales. Both of those things, I think, are a result of the Fed raising rates. So as interest rates have gone up, the cost to build homes has gone up accordingly. So the, the market's saying that people aren't buying building supplies right now because of that. Car sales, same thing, if you want a car, the interest rate's now 6%, 7% instead of 1%, right? So car sales are struggling as well. So for that reason, we're budgeting sales tax to be flat, where historically, we've grown at maybe 8% to 10%. So that's a, a concern. Things that are looking good, our property tax rate, even though we raised it last year, we're still below, I'd say, average in Utah County, if not on the low end there. And we're going to get an awesome building out of it, right? Somebody in Spanish Fork University asked me a question a couple of weeks ago, and I had to, I didn't really have an answer, but later that night, I thought about, they thought, what keeps you up at night? And our streets fund, it'd be the one fund that would maybe kind of worry me as far as the, the tax that we've used to pay for streets, that's changing, right? As vehicles become more effi-, fuel efficient, that amount of tax that we generate per mile is going down as those vehicles drive further per gallon, right? And then as you have electric vehicles, I think maybe that tax that's generated, it may not be what it was either. Our number one complaint in the city is traffic, and I don't know that we have the, the tax revenue to make it like everyone would like to see, you know? So those are some of my thoughts. But we, we do stand on the shoulders of those that came before us, and we have an awesome base to work off of. Does that kind of give you?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was great, thank you.
Jordan, before you go on mute, we talked about the $138 million in the enterprise fund, half of that being the new treatment plant.
Right.
Obviously, we're, that's a joint venture with Mapleton. Does that $138 encompass any of theirs, or is that all the Spanish Fork portion?
Yeah, it would. So they're paying for, I think it's 20% of the plant. So if the, if we're spending $65 million on the plant this year, they're paying for 20% of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jordan. Any other questions for staff?
My, my thoughts, you've heard the, the letter, the budget letter, it's, it's open to the public here, obviously, that now you're in the public hearing, so you can look up the budget, you can look up past budgets, you can look up this budget on the website, and it's on the agenda tonight. But a couple of, of things mentioned here, number one, I do, I do just like the honesty and, and, and being forthright with, with us as residents about this budget and being, being transparent. We always are, we're, we have a balanced budget. And local government, that differs a little bit from different levels of government that you're, that you're maybe yelling at the TV app, but you balance your budget here. I think the point of, of, you can't, we're not going to be able to save, our savings rates are good, but that's not going to completely offset what we're experiencing in the flat sales tax revenue. I think that's an important point to, to talk about. So even though there's, there's a lot of zeros produced by a 4.35% interest rate on your earnings, you can't just let it, let it sit and, and think that that's going to make up the, the gap in what some of those economic conditions are a little bit out of our hand, but, but that we've got to work with inside the budget as, as we go through it. The other point that I didn't know before being elected here, but again, I, I try to express this every time when we're talking about the budget with, with residents, is, is those dividend transfers, the utilities that you own in Spanish Fork, and SFCN's one of them, your, your, your power is one of them, those aren't included in every city. So every city, you know, usually has a, a utility fee for water, sewer, garbage, and that's what you pay, because that's what you, you have to pay to, to get rid of, of that stuff. But, but SFCN and, and our power, talk to your neighbors that live in other communities, we're always trying to make sure that we're on the low or, or, or somewhere on the lower end of those costs for our residents. We're competitive. But the real, the real neat thing about that are, you and I are the owners of those companies. So, so those transfers transfer from those, from those enterprise funds to the general funds that Officer Slaymaker can't write enough tickets to, to fund the police department. I wish he would. No, I'm just kidding. Corey, don't. But, but, but things like that, that are designed to not make money, they serve the community, the quality of life stuff, Parks and Rec will never collect enough $50 fees to play, play soccer, to, to, to do everything. But those are the places where your money's being invested. So if it was with a third-party company, they'd pay their shareholders, you're the shareholder, we're the shareholders, we get to, we get to experience the, the transfer to make your, your community better. So, and that's part of the public budget document as well. I will touch on, since you brought it up, Jordan, the road part of the, of the budget that keeps you up at night. I think that, I, I, I agree with that. I think that's part, every city is dealing with that. But I think, I think the county did take a big step towards that recently. Utah County was one of the counties that just passed the 5th fifth in, in the county, which means we can collect some sales tax revenue directly for roads and, and the maintenance and construction of them. So that should help a budget in the future.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We're so grateful for that action, and, and that's something we worked hard at this, this legislative session, to get that into some legislation, to reward cities that are diligently following the laws as it relates to the moderate income housing plans. And, and the legislature's often talking to us about carrots and sticks, and, and the, the interest groups on the other side of the discussion aisle really only want to talk about sticks. And so this was one that the legislature put into place for, for cities as we work through our moderate income housing plans and are in compliance with the various laws associated there, that we then can access funds from that 5th fifth. And that, we're one of those good-acting cities, and we're grateful for that action by the county, and, and that will absolutely go into the pot of funds to do transportation projects. And our city is one that, you've heard Chris talk about this, and I'll just reiterate it here, we, we have a lot of traffic challenges in our grid part of the city, which that doesn't make sense. How can you have transportation issues on a grid? There's a street in, you know, each direction everywhere, right? But in, long time ago, we're not talking 20 years ago, we're talking 60, 70 years ago, there were some adjustments made in how streets line up. And if you drive on 4th, or you drive on 8th, you see some of those where streets that, on the south side, they line up perfectly, but on the north side, they, they shrink and then they offset, and, and that creates problems. We've got natural problem, natural diver-, or, uh, natural barriers such as the river bottoms, the river railroad tracks. Back in the day, when our city was really, really small, here on North Main, we built a really nice park next to the school, right? The old landmark school, and then now what we call Swenson Park. And the high school was on the edge of town over here, and so the town, the roads dead-ended into those facilities. And now today, how do I want, if I want to go south through town, what is the one road I can go on? Main Street, right? And that's a problem. So it forces all of the traffic to go onto Main Street. So we've been doing different projects to, to improve our north-south movements, so that the grid works better. And so these, these additional funds that the county has made available to us, the state has given the county the ability to put in, put into place, will really help the ongoing challenges that we have to adjust some of these street network challenges that we have. And we'll never get them all done, there, there will always be a transportation project, but this will help us get to them a little bit easier, a little better. So yeah, great, great point, we're very grateful for that.
Yes, let's see, have we, have we went out, I think we went out of public hearing?
We did.
Right? Went out of public hearing. We haven't, now, we won't pass this budget tonight, it's not an action by the council to pass this budget. So you can still reach out to Jordan's department, to, to city staff, o- over the next couple of weeks, until we pass your 2024 budget. Feel free to reach out to us as well, for sure. I appreciate Councilwoman Beck's comments of, of us looking at this, and we'll continue to look at this. So any, any and all questions, please reach out before we approve a budget. But thank you, public, for, for being involved. Again, Seth's last paragraph here that says, although some aspects have been difficult, we present a balanced budget and look forward to working with you to finalize the fiscal year '24 budget in June. So again, we look forward to, to approving a budget, but even though there's difficulties in it, just know citizens, this is a balanced budget, and, and we're watching over your, your money, and, and it's top of mind all the time, so. Okay, anything else? I feel like I gave a sermon there, Chad.
You're good.
Okay. All right, let's move to item nine, a new business, proposed ordinance to amend Title 15 Waterwise Landscape Requirements. I know this is Mr. Dave Anderson that has some additional information for us about
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to report briefly back on some of the things that we discussed the last time this was on an agenda. And I'm really grateful that Rick Malloy, the Water Conservation Manager with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, is here with us tonight. I'm going to go kind of quick here, just maybe a few minutes, and appreciate him being available. I think the plan is maybe to have Rick provide a general overview of some of the efforts that the Conservancy District has made to encourage communities to help people use water more efficiently, and then maybe have some Q and A and that type of a thing with the council. Also, I want to thank Mr. Malloy and Councilman Euler for sitting down with us here now a few weeks ago to go over some of the specific things that we discussed the last time. We talked about this particular proposal. We had some questions about, really specifically, single-family lots with new construction, and what can be allowed and have our community's landscape requirements be consistent with the water conservation standards that the district has provided. And I'll speak to those a little bit, and then I'll let Rick fill in anything that I might miss. But in short, and I'm going to go pretty high level here, our effort with this is pretty straightforward, going back now many, many months to when we first started this. This is really about trying to encourage people to come up with ways to design landscapes that use less water. That's ultimately the bottom line. Have also taken that a step farther, particularly with new development, that's not just single-family homes. The approach would change with the adoption of this, to where certain requirements would, would likewise come into play to limit the amount of water that people can use to maintain certain landscapes. Part of the effort to encourage our residents to use water more wisely, this is one of a handful of things that we have on the agenda that's available for everybody to look at. We really appreciate the consultants that we work with, Landmark Design. They put this together back again on that, that encouragement side of things to help to demonstrate to our residents how they can install landscaping that's functional, attractive, and also that uses less water than what historically we've seen, which is just Kentucky bluegrass. A handful of different things here, particularly back to what we had on your agenda before. Really have designed a couple of very distinct paths, one for single-family homes on individual lots. The city today does not have a process that we go through to approve landscaping plans for home builders or individuals when they build homes and design landscaping for those properties. Likewise, we generally don't inspect to see if landscaping is installed a certain way. With a few developments, there are some requirements by way of, they're perhaps needing to install two trees of a certain size or that sort of a thing. But beyond that, we historically have been out of the business of regulating what type of landscaping people install on their properties, their individual lots. The proposal that's before the council tonight kind of is written with a couple of different options. And one of those options included some, I'm sorry, I would say includes, some highlighted language that does take some steps towards imposing some requirements for people, again with new construction, single-family homes and individual lots, try to put it as simply as I can, for the front and side yards, be really clear about what we're talking about. For the front and side yards, no more than 35% of the total landscaped area in the front and side yards can be turf grass. The backyards, potentially 100% could be. That is left to the homeowners with both what is included in the highlighted language as something of an option for the council to consider, and with the standards that the Conservancy District has provided. Do you have any questions about that? Okay, it's kind of a big deal, that's been something that we've discussed a lot, and frankly, there's been some confusion between our staff amongst ourselves and even some other cities that we've talked to about that. That single-family homes, for everything else, the approval process for getting landscaped, excuse me, getting landscape designs approved really hasn't changed by way of what people would do. They would still provide a landscape design for our staff to review to see if that design meets our requirements, but the basis for judging those designs would be different. Today, essentially, for any type of commercial or multifamily or industrial projects, the formula simply is, you must have X number of trees and X number of shrubs for every thousand square feet of required landscape area that you have. With this new approach, it's based on a water allowance that's defined by some things that have been given to us from some other agencies. I've come to learn that this is actually a fairly common practice to where there's a certain amount of water that landscape architect determines that can be used to keep plant material alive and healthy on a site. And they allocate that through their design to different types of plant material, ultimately to come up with a design that would have half of the site... to come up with a design that would have half of the site covered with living material when that living material is mature. But there's a couple of different things that we think are important and that, uh, the landscape designers that helped us with these standards think, uh, is important. It makes it so that we don't just have miles of rock with no living material. And, uh, you know, along with that, uh, it creates a more attractive land, uh, environment for the community and helps keep things a little bit cooler than we otherwise might see, which I'm coming to learn can be a really, really important thing. To transition from, uh, what historically really has been a lot of turf grass to other things, that's something that we want to be cognizant of. Do you guys have any questions about that? Okay, I'll wrap here pretty quick. I mentioned the highlighted language. So for your consideration tonight, we basically have what was presented the last time we talked about this a few weeks ago. And then there's what is in yellow. That language is both on the agenda for anybody to see as well as for you as the council to consider. That yellow language is kind of key in terms of bringing, uh, this proposal into conformity with the, uh, standards that have been given to us by the district, um, included as something of an option. These are some of the key changes. In fact, I think they really are all of the key changes that would be made if you choose to act on this item to, uh, tonight, to adopt it with the, uh, proposed language that's been highlighted, included. Does that make sense? If you're not inclined to include these particular provisions, uh, as part of what you adopt, then I think a motion simply would say something like, uh, without the language that's been provided, uh, in the highlighted text, something like that. Again, does that make sense? That really is the long and short of, kind of a recap of what's been discussed and what we've worked on since we last talked about this. I've also included on the agenda the presentation that we've made, the planning commission reviewed, uh, as well as the guidebook, uh, proposed updated tree list, some of the other kind of collateral material that's coming along with this proposal. I'll reiterate that the planning commission and development review committee both have recommended that this be approved. That was, um, in the form that didn't have these particular additions made. But that all being said, maybe one last time, any questions for me about any of this?
None yet, but I'm sure we'll have some.
I have a question while I'm thinking about it.
Good.
So it's saying, uh, front and side yard. So I live in a cul-de-sac where my backyard's really small and most of my property's on the side. And most side yards, well, in my case, it's behind a, mine is not behind a fence, but a lot of side yards can be behind a fence. Would that also be applicable to this? That I would have to follow if we-
Define side?
So some of the language actually that we've included with the draft that's before you tonight, I think this is less consequential, so I haven't mentioned it, but it defines what a side yard is.
Okay.
Which is basically everything between your side, the side of your home and your side property line.
Right.
In your case, uh, from the rear of your home to the front of your home. So if you think about that space-
It's a lot of space.
In some situations, that is a lot of space, without a doubt, in particular in corner lots. It becomes a lot of space. So in those cases, that space does indeed count as landscaped area. So if between adding up what, I'm going to try to gesture like we're talking about side yards down the side, and then you've got a front yard across the front, so all of that space, let's say that all adds up to 10,000 square feet. So if that adds up to 10,000 square feet, then somebody could have 3,500 square feet of turf grass in any part of that space, and they likewise could have their rear yard, um, entirely in turf grass, at least potentially. Does that help?
Yep. I'm just deciding if I like it or not.
Got it. Yeah, that, that was a key issue. Another thing that we've talked about a lot, uh, frankly, enforcement. I started to describe a little bit that we really don't have a process, and we're not different from other communities. Procedures, anything like that to do anything really other than to look at somebody's property and see that it's not just dirt and weeds. For other reasons, I think we touched on, uh, the state legislature changing our ability to use some tools in terms of keeping a property owner incentivized to install landscaping, some type of a cash deposit, for example. In the absence of the, excuse me, in the absence of having the ability to do that, we have retooled, and, uh, this would certainly come into play, uh, at this point in terms, potentially at least of checking to see how much turf grass somebody has, but, um, today, property owners are given one year from the date that a home is occupied to have their front, and I would say now, side yards landscaped. So with that being the case, uh, on the anniversary of us issuing a certificate of occupancy for a particular home on a single-family lot, we'll be going out and we'll be doing some type of an inspection to, to see if indeed, uh, whatever the landscape requirements are have been met. And if they haven't been, then we will be starting some type of code enforcement action. Typically, we start with a letter. Usually, we send a couple of different letters. But in all candor, uh, we haven't made a practice of being really aggressive with that historically. Even with some of the tools that we've had by way of deposits, we've simply held deposits in some cases. We were holding deposits that are many, many, you know, years behind when somebody should have installed the yard. We don't necessarily anticipate that changing, and I appreciate Mr. Malloy, I think he has a good understanding, just based on the conversation that we had, of some of the things that hinder a city's ability to, to be real aggressive on enforcing how people take care of their properties, maybe I'd say rather, uh, how people, uh, improve their properties. That certainly was, was a concern for me, given the role that we play in some of this in our department. But, uh, I'm of the opinion that, uh, we can, we can advise property owners of compliance or non-compliance, uh, with these standards like we have in the past and go down whatever path ultimately you give us direction to do on the code enforcement side. If somebody should fail, to take and apply with the requirements regardless of what they are, and, uh, it's my understanding that, um, uh, the Conservancy District is comfortable with that approach today, so.
Dave, you and I were, um, together in the city office buildings a couple of days ago, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, and then a resident asked about artificial turf, right? Or the, the fake grass on their front lawn. What would this do for that person?
Nothing. Today, uh, that's not allowed as an acceptable form of, uh, landscape improvements in the front and side yards. In the instances where we do require a certain kind of landscaping, rear yards, uh, uh, it's completely allowed if somebody would like to do that. Um, and that's how this draft has been written.
But people recently have put it in their front yards and received their deposit back, correct?
I am not aware of that.
Okay. I won't turn them in then.
Okay.
But I know it's happened. Um, and a concern, I think, with this is I'm driving around, like, I love Kerbit pill, and I love a beautiful yard, but I know it's expensive and it's time-consuming and it's a lot of knowledge. You have to put a lot of time into it. So I think, okay, putting a front lawn in and just having a family with four little kids, just getting your front lawn mowed is one thing, but then to like, take care of the weeds and the plants and the bark all over, like, I, could this potentially set us up for in 10 years, driving around and looking at trashy yards, like, where people just can't take care of it because it's a lot of work where maybe they could have just mowed the front lawn and kept it up? So that's a concern. I'm not expecting you to answer it.
Can I? I mean, and I would say on a personal level, so-
Okay, yes.
Not the professional informed opinion at all, but, uh, I think that's absolutely a, a real thing. Definitely a genuine concern. For most of us, we grew up understanding or learning a little bit about how to take care of a certain kind of landscaping. It's pretty easy to do. I have heard from different people that, uh, take care of landscaping for a living that the easiest, most efficient thing to take care of is grass. You know, that once-a-week mowing seems like a chore at the time, but, um, I've observed and I've participated in efforts to keep weeds out of, um, other types of landscape improvements and treatments. And we've talked with some folks here, one particular business owner that cannot hire people to take down the weeds and the rock on his business's property. He's tried, he's offered much more than what he ever expected it to, to cost to be able to maintain those spaces. That's a real thing, and yet, uh, today for, uh, most situations in the city with the landscape requirements that are in place, people can use rock. And it's been that way for some time. So it's not like we're, we're doing a 180 at all by way of, uh, taking an approach that probably does result in people using less turf grass. But I think by and large, people dramatically underestimate what it takes from a maintenance perspective. Zero escaping, I really believe, is anything but zero maintenance. I was in Las Vegas a couple of weeks ago and observed, uh, people out raking what appears to be road-based to me in their yard to just take care of leaves and debris and different things like that. Picking up the types of things that I do every week with a lawnmower, you know? So, uh, maybe it's like, nothing's free, everything's going to take effort, it's a different kind of effort. I happen to have a couple of folks in my neighborhood that have decided to go the rock and the mulch route, and it's not pleasing to the eye at all, you know, year two and three after the fact. But I certainly know as well that it can be done, hence, you know, some of the effort that we've put into trying to demonstrate to people what maybe to consider in terms of how things get designed and what particular treatments to use well and that kind of thing, so.
What about park strips? Dave, it seems like a pretty big deal. No more grass in park strips, so new subdivisions will have the, the side, the road and then not grass and then the sidewalk?
Correct. Yep.
But the-
That's the highlighted area there.
Are the park strips, I'm trying to remember, are park strips required to have vegetation? They are, correct? Okay. So under these new conditions, you can't just throw down a bunch of gravel or a bunch of rocks. You do have to have sprinkler line in there and provide, if I'm correct, up to 50% of your park strip when it grows out needs to be vegetation.
It might be that way for the Conservancy District, but we haven't necessarily defined it that way here.
Okay. So we've not set that in our-
For the, for the same, for single-family homes, for other-
But, but if I put grass in there in my new home, and you come a year later to make sure my yard's in, you're going to say tear that grass out in the park strip?
Red flag, yeah. And it's even that way. Our park strips are eight feet wide, and there's some other language that, uh, very expressly says, anything that's eight feet, I think, or less is how I would interpret it, can't be turf grass, but it also says expressly, not in park strips or areas that are, are eight feet in width or narrow, or something to that effect.
Rick, can I ask you a question? If that's all right? Along, along with what the mayor was just saying with park strips, if a, a lot of this initiative and a lot of the feedback I'm getting from residents is because of the turf buyback program that's taking place, they want to be able to participate in that. They're tired of having lawn that's dying or whatever, and they want to flip their park strip or whatever, and at the same time, they want to get a rebate for it, which the governor and, and the Conservation District and others are, are promoting, right? So one question I have is if we, if we adopt this in our ordinance to where it complies with the district's requirements to participate in the rebate, if we get a homeowner, new construction, they come in, they put in their yard, they put in grass in their park strip, which goes against what they're supposed to do, they're then asked to rip it out, could they rip it out and get the turf buyback when they were supposed to have not put it in to begin with?
It's a really good question. Yes, they would. Essentially, and, and maybe if it's okay, I can just provide maybe a little bit of background as we, and it might help answer some of these questions, uh, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I, I kind of want to outline two, uh, concurrent things that are happening, uh, within our state and within the district. About almost two years ago, a year and a half ago, the district requested that all cities adopt water-efficient landscaping. We provide water efficiency standards to the, to the cities, uh, throughout our service area. And that was largely in, in an effort to, uh, reduce water consumption and water waste, uh, within our service area. And it, it, maybe a little bit more background, probably more than you want, but, uh, Central Utah Water Conservancy District is the primary, uh, conveyor of the Colorado River system in Utah. So the water that we provide throughout Utah County and Salt Lake County is Colorado River water. And in order to really negotiate, uh, with the Colorado River system, uh, we need to be aggressive with conservation. We're constantly being compared to other states and other water users, and our water rights are the most junior in the state. And so our water supply is really in jeopardy if we, uh, are not a team player when we go to negotiations with the other, uh, Colorado River Basin states. And so one of the things that we did as a district is we, um, agreed to a 30% reduction in turf. And largely, the way that we're planning to do that is not in turf removal, but it's in future growth and how we grow in, in a more sustainable fashion. Now, on the other side of that, um, our programs for turf removal, such as Flip Your Strip or these landscape incentive programs through Utah Water Savers, are now tied to adopting these ordinances, and that was a state decision. The state, as they fund these programs, said you cannot provide any funding to municipalities that have not adopted ordinances. And that somewhat tied our hands in our ability to negotiate certain aspects of these landscape, uh, standards. And so the 35% in front and side yards and the no lawn in eight, or no lawn in park strips or areas less than eight feet wide are the specific language that was called out in legislation or in statute by the state for distribution of those funds. And so, like I said, there's kind of two concurrent things. We had room for negotiation and flexibility until the state kind of put that component in place. And so, um, once a municipality has adopted those standards, then all residents are eligible to participate in those programs. And we don't distinguish between when they, when that turf was put in or, or how that turf was put in, we, they're just eligible for those programs. And I'll also mention that we've been working with, uh, developers and with new home builders to provide incentives for what we might call as like turf avoided. You mentioned, uh, Councilman Beck, or Councilwoman Beck, that the, that there is a cost associated. This is a higher cost, it's more expensive than turf. And so we have programs and funding available to offset that cost. We know it's a, a reality, and so whether that money goes to the homeowner that's installing it or the home builder that's installing it, we have both, uh, programs available. So I, I hope that answers at least some of your questions, and I'm more than happy to answer more questions. I'll probably also mention that we have had a number of projects. Councilman Euler was one of those, uh, Flip Your Strip applicants, I think, last year. But we've, we've paid out about $12,000 in completed projects, and we have about $37,000 in projects that are to be completed this year that we, uh, will pay out. And then since May 1, when we launched the program, we've had about 75, uh, requests for participation in Spanish Fork City. And so we kind of track that to provide that information, um, to, to you and, and to staff. So I, I guess if there's any other questions, I'm happy to, to stick around and answer any that you may have.
Just one follow-up question to what you said. So the standards that the state set are these ones that are up here?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I, I mean, there, there's other language that we've worked on.
Right.
But the, kind of the sticking points, which I think are probably the, the hot topics to decide on, is that 35% and that eight-foot cap rule.
Then my question would be, I think it would, I don't know if it would come to Chris, Dave, Seth, I don't know who the question would go to, but what funding are we missing out on if we don't adopt those?
Yeah, what is this funding all about? I'm not clear on it, and I doubt our viewers, no.
I I can't answer it if you want. So right now, there's funding combined, so it's district conservation dollars in coordination with Division of Water Resources Conservation Dollars. That's where it's set today. So we're talking about funding for the Flip Your Strip, commercial turf removal incentives. So everything that's related to conservation in landscapes, that's the funding that's restricted today.
So it's nothing that we're currently getting that we would be missing out on, okay, thank you.
Can I ask maybe a series of questions, try to get some examples and maybe just have you jump up? We'll walk through a couple of hypotheticals in just a moment. And Dave, get your microphone ready, a question or two for you as well. What, first of all, the definition of of us of the side yard, is that something that the district gives us or is that something we put together? Who defines front yard, side yard?
So the state did not put a definition on side yard or front yard for that matter, and so we have left that and and we have talked about that a little bit in terms of that's something that I feel like cities should define within your ordinance. So it if you define it as the entire, like when we look at a side yard from the front of the house to the rear of the house, what that does is it allows more turf to be located in the front of the property. Typically, homes, the the turf that's on the side yards is not as functional as it is in the front yard. And you have a lot of areas that end up as RV pads or sidewalks or things of that nature in the side yard.
So in our ordinances that we passed today, or if we continue this for a week or a meeting or two and work on this, we we can define what side yard, front yard is. And for purposes of your program, to be compliant with it, we just need to meet our definitions of front and side.
That's correct.
Back is not inside the purview of this program, the thirty five percent is outside of the backyard.
That's correct.
So let's go to a, let's go to a, just a random home in Spanish Fork. There is no advancing upslides, there's like the first slide. Alright, random home. Uh, this home is about ninety five hundred square feet, about fifty five hundred of square feet of the home is not under home or driveway. And so Dave, as I read the the ordinance that you've proposed, basically the area of the home that is the area of the lot that is underneath this structure here and underneath the driveway here, that's outside of the calculations. And then for purposes of our discussions today, Dave, Dave suggested that the side of the lot be defined from this plane to this plane and from either this plane or that plane, not sure which, we'll call it this one for now, that plane to that plane, is that correct, Dave? Uh, and then everything in front of that, of course, is front yard and everything back of that is backyard. So this is an image then kind of identifying what would be the front yard and side yards. In this image, I kind of broke the mow strips into one number, that three hundred and thirty two square feet. And then this area in green is is one, that's the west one, so eighteen hundred square feet. And this one is the east side, so eleven hundred square feet. And then the backyard, based on this plane, would be underneath the orange color, that's some twenty three hundred square feet. So if if I do the math on this with the way Dave was suggesting it, then you'd have all of the area outlined in these green images, that adds up to thirty three hundred square feet. Thirty five percent of that is eleven hundred and sixty six. Interestingly, that's really, really close to what's on this side. Right, that's the same number that's over here. That, is that how you would understand what we've put together, Dave, is that how you understand what you've put together? Okay. So one question that I've had as I read our ordinance, I've chatted with Dave a little bit about this and and want some feedback from Dave and and some from you as well, Rick, that in our language, it talks about undeveloped. And I want to make sure that that we understand, because we're, as a council, you're you're writing this, right, you're approving this. What what is undeveloped mean? And so if if this is a new home, then the equivalent of what's in this area here is all that could be in turf. Now that could be spread out in different places, well, let me show you what maybe that would look like. In this particular home, you would you would potentially take out the mow strip, this area on the side and this area on the backside, and then this area in mob and really only have that, that that area right there adds up to about that eleven hundred and sixty six square foot limit. One question that I had for Dave and and he and I kind of went back and forth on this one. If I choose in my setup of of my property here in this hypothetical example, or if I choose to put this in cement or rock for that extra parking, like you were saying, it's a side yard, I could have a fourth car parking spot, maybe that's where I put my ADU. Certainly in Spanish Fork, we know we're gonna have a trailer or seven. And so we could put that here. In the calculations of what I could have in my front yard, again, assuming that we use the the side yard limits, you know, the back of the plane here, would this being in parking lot asphalt or, sorry, cement or rock so that I could drive on it? Would that be inside the greater calculator? The greater calculus so that I could have still that eleven hundred and sixty seven square feet? Or because I chose to put that in cement, would that shrink my total square footage?
Well, it, part of this is how you define it and and structure your ordinance. But we, what we have typically seen is we define kind of that developed or what's standard.
The typical.
Yeah, and then everything else, we we sometimes refer to it as an activity zone. And that activity could be like a, you know, an RV parking pad. It al, it could also be a pickleball court, right? So that hardscape, it serves a function that was designed, it was part of the, we'll say, landscape. Okay, it was something that was set up after or outside of what would be standard, whatever that standard footprint of the driveway is.
Okay, so in this situation, if this homeowner, when they moved in, because obviously this is an existing home, so it's kind of outside of the purview of the project, but new home, new construction, if they from day one said, you know, they move in, we're gonna pour some additional cement here, then they could still have the eleven hundred and sixty seven. And I I think for council's purpose, if you take this this area out, and I don't know what this area is in mob, but let's say it's eight hundred square feet, if you take that out of the calculator, then you also take out its thirty five percent as well, so that eleven sixty seven would shrink to, say, ten fifty or whatever the whatever the math actually turns into, shrinking, thereby shrinking the, you know, the amount of turf that you'd have in the front yard. Alright, let's go to a different random set of homes, these are two homes in a cul-de-sac in Spanish Fork. And this is where I think we we have a good example of like what side yards would look like. Frankly, as I look at these two homes, I think both of them probably, I haven't done any of the actual measurements on them, but I would say they're probably pretty close to the thirty five percent anyways with how they've set it up. But I I think there may be a reason for us to address this type of property in what we do. I don't know how to do that, but in some way, because for this particular home, a lot of its property, a lot of its usable space is on the side as well as, you know, if we just have this linear area that's in the back. Is that how?
Can I, can I touch on that just a little bit?
And again, these are just random kind of examples across town.
Yeah, again, I didn't stress this, but on the last page of the memorandum, the the one that was sent out today, you can find the definitions, as proposed at least, for front, rear and side yards. We spent more time, three of us on staff, than you would ever expect, three people to spend talking about how to define those things. We had long definitions, we had short definitions, and in the end, we opted to keep it about as simple as we can with the idea that we think it's prudent to not over describe what those things can be because there's so many different irregularities that come with just how properties are designed and what people do with them. But within within the way that we've defined them, I think there's plenty of latitude to say, for example, that this area here is the side yard. In this particular case, at least with respect to to landscaped area that's in the side yard. On the other side, it looks to me like everything's already hardscape. So that would not count this area here as landscaped area. So you have the side yard here and then you'd have this area here that is still landscaped area. So it'd be the sum of all of the space in that area, that would be the the basis of the formula, that area times point three five to give you how much turf grass somebody could have. And again, in the rear yard, it's it's a totally different ballgame there, does that make sense? Trying to keep again, our approach relative to how we're defining things loose enough to where we can account for unique situations without clearly running against the way things are defined.
Can our approach and definitions be loose enough that like the last home that Seth had up there, where they put their fence makes a difference for their rear yard? Or is that too subjective of encouraging people, maybe directing them where to do that? I mean, I'm, again, I'm concerned about too much of looking at that home and, hey, Dave, yep, hire another guy or two or three gals to go out and take pictures over people's fences and do the math of what their side yard is. Because that's that's the vast majority, if you're talking single family residents, that looks like a lot of our single family residents and that's about where their fence goes. And so just thinking about, hey, it's it's their property, it's your property. And if you want to, you know, if we want to make an ordinance where they can get some funds and conserve water and sorry, Rick, you're gonna be part of the messenger here, but we've been doing that for twenty five years here in Spanish Fork. So whatever degree of success we're having in the state, it's because Spanish let out on it. And I'm a little frustrated, we don't get any concern from the legislature for that of our population grows and our water use goes down and it's been secondary irrigation forever. What's that? Metered, yeah, so there's never been water on a Tuesday or on Thursday in Spanish, it's you can water and you're gonna pay for it and 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 our residents are as responsible as anybody in the state, I would say, for that stuff. And so in that spirit, in that vein, that's where I'm like, geez, I don't want, I don't want to hire, I don't want to make government bigger to go do it. And if I'm the homeowner, I don't want them, you know, I don't want to catch the the guy looking over my fence, what are you doing? Yeah, and I and I should have let out that the district and Spanish Fork have had a long, great history and we do acknowledge the efforts that have been done. And we often recognize Spanish Fork as leading the way in terms of water conservation and 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 metering and everything that we've done. And we participated in various projects together. And I think it's it's been to the credit of Spanish Fork and the residents to show, yes, you are moving in the right direction. That's not reflective of probably many other communities in Utah County. And and like I said, the state kind of took away a lot of our ability to negotiate on on things. I will add that every city, because we really want the cities that we work with to develop a standard that meets their needs. In in hopes that it also meets the criterias here. But we have worked with other cities that say side yard is defined as whatever that fence line is or whatever would be developer installed, so everything in front of the fence. So there there are different ways to do that. Obviously, when you remove the side yards or the bulk of the side yards, that does shrink that thirty five percent down in the front yard. And so the benefit of expanding that is that you get a larger potential area of turf in your front yard when you include those side yards. So it, a lot of it's about how those definitions or what makes the most sense, practically speaking. We've worked with a lot of new home builders, ivory homes, and they're putting in these homes and and people are are happy and and enjoy this type of a landscape. It is a shift in mentality and in effort from from mowing. But it's something that the state has put a lot of emphasis behind and we feel like it's, I mean, forty four percent of our use in Utah County is outdoor residential use. And so it's kind of the lowest hanging fruit for conservation. And really, one of our only tools moving forward to reduce, reduce that use.
Rick, can you talk to or address kind of what other communities who have adopted this are doing as far as enforcement? I I don't imagine they've got people that are coming out to the homes with their tape measures and their yardsticks and jumping the fence and, you know. What are they doing to enforce that that things are being done properly?
Yeah, and up until May, we were, the state, or most communities were using bonds, landscape bonds, which I know Spanish Fork was doing, which are now not allowed because the legislature took that, those tools away from us. Most communities are working with developers, so they're saying, they're putting the burden on the developer. And through education and upfront information for building and development development agreements or master plan communities, it works really well. When you have one off, you know, I work with Linden City, it's a lot different for them as they're developing infill lots than it is working with Lehigh City, where they've just got a ton of new development, master plan communities where they're able to work with those developers and approve a set of landscape plans. They say, okay, here's a dozen landscape plans, pick, pick, you know, and they're rotating through those plans and they're all meeting that conforming standard. And so it, there are some challenges ahead for how each community develops that. We do have a list of tools available to say, here's what you can do, similar as to what Dave presented in terms of code enforcement, action. It it, that is a challenge, that is a really big challenge. We do also provide funding to help offset cost of increased labor because we recognize that that's that's a concern, especially in communities such as Spanish Fork that have a lot of development.
What are other cities doing about artificial turf?
So almost all the cities in Utah County are, have some restrictions on artificial turf. Most communities aren't ready to allow that in excess for various reasons. We don't, for us, we don't prohibit it, we don't talk about it. We also try not to encourage it just because many cities don't want to see artificial turf in their communities.
Okay, I'm still confused, I'm so sorry. And if anyone can help me understand this, the funding, who's getting this funding that you're talking about? The city, I'm assuming, the residents, what, how is this tied together?
Yeah, so the district has about five million dollars allocated for conservation funding. And that is funding that goes to homeowners, it goes to home builders, it's for all of our conservation programs. Goes to cities in in the form of grants. The state has five million dollars of one time funding that they're trying to get out the door as quickly as possible. It's tied to ARPA funds. And then they have three million dollars of ongoing funding, that three million dollars, along with the five million dollars one time funding, is tied specifically to turf removal programs, not necessarily just for residents, but anyone who wants to use it, including municipalities, schools, businesses, anybody that wants to have any type of turf removal or landscape change where their turf, where turf is being removed, then there are incentive dollars for that, for those projects.
And Kevin, can I ask you, so very similar to Flip Your Strip, but this is more for the front yard, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. And you're saying seventy-five Spanish Fork residents have reached out to you asking if our city implements that?
For the front yard or for the flip the strip?
So we, same thing basically.
Yeah, we now, rather than having kind of different separated programs, it's just one program that includes whatever you want to do. If you want to change a park strip or a side yard, if you wanna put in a, you know, a garden, whatever you wanna do where there's turf removal, it's just one program that you can apply for.
So the thirty-five percent, sorry, go ahead Rick.
I was just gonna say, so yeah, seventy-five residents have, uh, gone in to create an application and go to apply and are not able to apply for the program because it's not available yet in Spanish Fork.
Okay.
And to become available, we would need to adopt this to where new construction now falls under these requirements. Existing construction, if you wanted to come in and now flip just your park strip, not your front yard, but just your park strip. Because we've adopted these, now you can apply to flip your park strip to get money back for doing that.
Do you have like a range, like a price range of what people would get for doing something like this?
Yeah, so right now we're paying between two and three dollars a square foot of turf removed. So two dollars would be for a small project, so think of a park strip. Three dollars would be for an entire front yard or an entire backyard. Um, that is, uh, typically what we have seen in the past is somewhere between six hundred square feet and twelve hundred square feet of lawn removed. It varies widely depending on the, the service area, but that's kind of, most people, what they wanna do is they wanna start with their park strip and that's what they're converting. And so, um, we anticipate that our average will be somewhere around twenty-five hundred dollars.
For a front yard?
For, for a, a small project.
If you've got a six hundred square foot park strip, which is probably about typical, I think that's about where mine fell. You're gonna get the low end because it's not the whole front yard. So you're gonna get around two dollars, so you're getting about twelve hundred bucks back for your park strip.
Okay, and in the average lot size, front yard, they would get about twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, twenty-five, and that's probably on the small end. I would say Spanish Fork residents would probably get more than that because the lots here are larger than what is standards.
And if we did not accept and implement this, are there, what cons would the Spanish Fork, the city of Spanish Fork face? Are you going to hold funding from us in a couple of years for some future thing? Possibly.
Um, so it appears to be that the direction of our board is that, and, and I can't speak for everything, but I can tell you that we have tied, um, additional water to adopting these standards. So there are some communities, um, that are, we do have some water that's not allocated, uh, in areas like Lehigh Eagle Mountain. And in order to get that additional water, they had to adopt these standards. Again, because we have such a finite amount of water and we have more, um, need than there is a water supply when you look at, uh, that meets your needs. But if we look at it holistically, yes, there's going to be areas and, and maybe I shouldn't mention this, but I will anyways. But there are communities that have deficits of thousands and thousands of acre feet when they look at their build-out. And at some point, it'll come down to they just don't have the water. And, you know, it's not like we as a district have a lot more water left. There just isn't that much water left. And so, um, developing additional supplies is off the table.
So if a community like Eagle Mountain, Saratoga, adopt these, where they've got a potential for quite a bit of growth still out there, they then are consuming or taking some of the shares or the water from the district that other communities eventually may not be able to get.
Correct.
Because they were first in line.
Yep.
Kevin, the twelve hundred bucks that, uh, you got?
I didn't get that much.
Oh. Last year it was only a dollar and a quarter.
Yeah.
So we've.
Should've waited.
That's what you get for going quick. What, is there a calculation of, about what that is? I mean, Kevin did that himself and, and, and got blisters on his hand. But somebody like Chad that doesn't know the, what the business end of a shovel is, he's gonna hire that out? What's, what's, what's the, what's the difference? If you're getting twelve hundred bucks, is it costing twenty-four hundred bucks, is it half?
It's a bit of a moving target, so we try to, we try to keep up on what the market is. And most people, I'll just mention that most people do it themselves. And they, they, we're a, a state and a community that really likes DIY. And so when you're, when you're doing it that way, we've talked to, uh, y- you know, some people who, yeah, they might actually make a couple bucks off of this project and that's fine, we, we don't care. Um, if you hire this out, last year where landscape contractors were extremely hard to get ahold of and they were setting their price at astronomical rates, some people were paying upwards of ten dollars per square foot to have it removed. That's come down already this year significantly with the, the slow in housing and development. That's where most of the contractors, uh, landscape contractors are doing their work. And so what we're hoping to see is, we really want to be somewhere between paying a quarter and half of the cost of what a developer would, would charge. So, um, and, and feedback like that is what allows us to adjust our rates and really push and advocate that the state invests more so that we can increase our, the dollar amount. So that's why now we're at two to three dollars and, and maybe we go up from there if, if, uh, if that's kind of the feedback that we're getting on these communities.
Stacy, it goes back to your concern where really people are obviously gonna try and get as much money out of this as, as they can, which means most people will try and do it themselves, which goes back to the concern you brought up where ten years from now, you'll be able to see who did it themselves and who hired it out more than likely, because if you do it yourself, you're gonna be cutting corners, save money. If you don't go down deep enough and then put enough depth of mulch, you're gonna have weeds that you're fighting constantly.
Yeah.
So that, that's the key, is making sure that if you're doing it yourself, you know how to do it appropriately so that you're not having that battle every single year.
And, and I'll probably add to that, that's one of the reasons why we are pushing so hard for ordinances because as these are developer-installed, they're done right from the beginning and they're going to look better, longer. And, and really that's, we have no illusion that we're going to tear out, you know, enough water to, I say water, but enough lawn to, to make up for what we need. It's really dependent upon that growth. It, I mean, that's the only way that we were able to, to make ends meet.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, good information.
Mayor, there's a couple of things I, I learned today, I really appreciate Rick, your time. Uh, I learned based on some of our discussions in the past that this, this is focused on our front and side yards only, not the backyards. So that, I really appreciated learning that. We, we can define what front and side are and we can define what the undeveloped area is. So in Dave's, uh, language that he's got in the draft that he's submitted to you today, we've got a, um, a, a phrase that says, "Other non-irrigated areas intentionally left undeveloped." I think it's out within our purview to define what that is. And then Rick, I do have a question, one more for you, and that is in terms of the state grants. I think this is what Councilwoman Beck was probably alluding to or, or getting at. We've got a state grant we're trying for in water conservation that because we've got our irrigation system that's already metered, we don't have access to those funds that, that have been made available to all the cities. But we do have access to a possible two million dollars because of what other grants were made available for cities like ours. Will this requirement be there for that two million dollars today, do you know?
I do know that it's not tied to it today.
Okay.
So I can tell you that, uh, because there are communities that are getting those funds that have not adopted ordinances.
That's the right answer.
I know that for sure. But today, I mean, but in six months or next legislative session, I don't know.
Right. And, and I think it's fair to say that the train is coming.
Yeah.
Right. But we've got a lot of latitude with what I've learned today, that we have some, should say a lot of latitude, but we have the ability to define. I, I should add one more thing that, I think Dave, Dave suggested, uh, I think it was a good suggestion, the more area that is inside of the equation for the front and side yard means that I do get a bigger area. And I think Rick touched on that in one of his examples. So, uh, including the side yards is a good, I think it's probably not a bad idea because it does allow for the point three five to be applied to a larger number. One thing that I think deserves a little bit of further scrutiny from you is what area gets cut out of it. And so in this situation, in this home, this is where the driveway is. And this is, I'm assuming, a three-car garage in this, in this home setup. This is additional to what is typical and this is additional to what is typical. I would, I would probably expect to say, or see, this is inside of the calculator and, and because this is not developed as turf, that turf could then be over here in the point three five. Not taken out of it because this homeowner, right from the beginning, decides to make this something, uh, other than, you know, growing vegetation. Uh, I, I think that's something that worth, worth consideration here. And I think that's different than what Dave said in some of your comments, right?
So the, on the, what I think is the south side, maybe at least the bottom side of that?
Turn on your mic.
It's off, thanks. Uh, is that, is that gravel, some kind of impermeable material on the south side of the lot?
Let's, let's, for purposes of this, this discussion, say it's cement.
So would that count as landscaped area then?
It would, it would count as landscaped area because it's not.
Part of the driveway?
Part of the driveway.
So you would just exclude driveway? Any additional?
Really? Yeah, any additional hardscape, because that hardscape could be extending a patio, it could be, I don't know.
So you're really looking for the typical, and I don't know if this is the right thing, but I have my dr- my driveway that lines up to my garages, whether it's two, three or four, it doesn't matter, but that's typical. Outside of that?
Yeah, and, and I think it comes back to a desire to look at what I can consider developer-installed, right? The developer, the home builder is gonna say, this is what's, this is what we have to provide per the city, right? We have to provide so much concrete for a driveway.
Anything else is extra.
Anything else is extra and you chose to put it in concrete or you chose to put it in bark mulch or whatever you wanted to put on that. And so we would, we would consider that to be landscaped area. If you decided to put in a pool, that's, even though we wouldn't say that's landscaping, it's still what would be considered a landscape area. So an, an activity zone or a hardscape for another purpose other than what was originally put there.
Thank you. I was really lucky to find these just random examples, but I think they proved really useful.
These are a couple of your elected officials, is what those are, but.
We have some more simple examples at the end of that presentation. Kind of dumbed down versions of what Seth's been speaking to here.
What we, um, what we don't have control over, again, going back to the park strip. I mean, every, every new single-family subdivision built in Spanish Fork will have, will have a park strip that's bark or rock or something, something other than turf, right?
So why have one?
A park strip?
Yeah, is it just to create a barrier between the sidewalk and the street?
Yeah, I think that's among the most important space in a neighborhood.
I can't hear you.
If it gets.
I'll leave it on. Um, I think that's among the most important space that we have in residential neighborhoods, particularly single-family homes. I'd suggest that we take a step towards requiring street trees. Um, that is one of the biggest benefits that you get out of having a park strip. Uh, other benefits that I could go on about relative to encouraging people to use sidewalks and that type of a thing. But it's important space for a lot of, a lot of purposes. I, I'd hesitate to recommend that we do away with them. But, uh, with the exception of master plan developments, we don't require vegetation in park strips. So I appreciate some of the comments that have, had have been mentioned tonight. Maybe that's, that's something we need to look at more closely with this particular proposal to talk about getting vegetation in park strips, some amount, some type, something like that. Having that be part of the requirement, again, historically, with single-family lots, we haven't, we just haven't been in that business, except like I mentioned, for trees. And over the course of the past few years, requiring a street tree plan for master plan developments. Um, I think it'd be an easy transition for us to make though, particularly with the park strip, which incidentally, you know, that is public space or at least it's public property. That's, that's part of the public right of way, that's not somebody's lot, although we do expect people to improve it and to maintain it. So I, I appreciate that, I think that's good feedback for us to have, maybe something to look at.
The new highlighted, um, things that we're talking about tonight, those weren't brought forth when it was at DRC and Planning Commission, correct? These are new now.
That is correct, yes.
Are we ready to vote on anything or do we need a table that's something, things over?
I personally am not ready to approve this, especially with the highlighted areas. The other stuff I'm a little more okay with because we've had a while to digest it and to really define it. But I think that if we're going to approve this, we need to make sure we're getting it right.
I agree. How are you, you two, Billy?
This side?
Yeah, if, if any of you feel like you need more time to discuss it, we've already passed kind of what we were looking at earlier. So I feel like we've got.
Do you feel good about this though, Kevin?
I do, I do. Yeah, I feel comfortable with it. I, I think it's, I think it can be worded in a way that, that things can, can take place. Um, as far as developers putting it in or even if it's homeowners that put it in. Obviously, I think the biggest concern is gonna be enforcement, but I think that's gonna fall in lines with everything else we've enforced in the city, to be honest with you, so.
I think that Dave and his team have done a good job in giving you a lot of good examples and good information and certainly a good start in, in possible language. I think some of the information that Rick has brought tonight as well has been really helpful. Unless you give us some specific things you'd like us to reword, work on and tweak, what we bring back in, say, two weeks is gonna look exactly the same.
Okay.
So if, what are some things that you would like to see potentially changed, maybe some alternatives or differences in what we've shown today? And I'll go back over maybe some of my notes, that we can define front and side yard. So that's on the table for.
So we don't need to decide it right now?
No, but we can, if you want us to bring back other ideas and other alternatives, like Dave said, they had the three of them sitting on the table talking about this for more time than he would like to go back and do again. But I'm sure from that discussion, they had a few other options, so they could bring you back a couple of other options to consider.
But from Rick, that's at our discretion anyway, that's a change.
Yeah, yeah, we can define also undeveloped area. And I, I don't know if you had that aha, if you were getting that kind of an aha moment on the other home example in the cul-de-sac that.
Yeah.
So we can, we can define the undeveloped area or, or you call it activity zone. But we, we have, those things are, I think, up for our discretion.
And I think the other, the one thing that I would add to what you just said is defining what should be in the park strip or what, uh, like the vegetation, what we want to be in there, because right now it just says, um, it cannot be lawn. Really poor indication on here.
And in our, in our typical subdivision, the park strip is eight feet. So it could be turf according to your standard, or does it have to be eight feet, one inches?
The state, what's in statute, says park strips or areas less than eight feet wide.
Oh, thank you.
So it says both.
Okay.
So no.
So no lawn in park strips. Uh, but I would, if I can, if this is appropriate, I would encourage you to have language in your ordinance that says, this is what is encouraged or this is what is allowed or this is what's required. So I went through this process, uh, fairly recently with Sandy City and they, uh, developed a plan for exactly what materials they wanted or better yet, what materials they did not want to see. So there were things, uh, you know, prohibiting whatever they didn't want. So there were things, you know, prohibiting whatever, they didn't want to end up in their storm drain, for instance. And then also some sort of, and I think it was already mentioned, but density, plant density requirement. And that could include tree canopies, or whatever you wanted to find that, but saying in a park strip, you should have some sort of vegetation. And, and we, almost every city ordinance has language defining some of those aspects. But if what you adopted, or if you were to adopt the standards as they are today, and then work on these other issues, tomorrow, you would, your residents would be eligible for the programs. This is, what you have in there is what we need to see. Everything else kind of falls within what the city would want to work through.
I mentioned this to Rick and Dave in the meeting that we were in earlier, but in my neighborhood, a lot of the homes, the new homes are now putting in their landscaping. Winter's over, so they're kind of putting that in now. Without these requirements, the majority are not putting turf in their, in their park strips. They're doing rock, or vegetation, or trees, or whatever. But it's interesting to see that people are kind of on their own, making that decision to not put, not put grass in their park strips.
And I like what Dave said, because I think there should be some, some kind of guidelines, because I want them to be eligible for this. So I, I think we're, I'm okay with what we do here, but there needs to be some guidelines. So we just don't park, start bringing in boulders and rocks and everything, including on our park strips with whatever they can find that's cheap, which is rock. Well, not necessarily, but anyway, I, I think we need to define that a little bit, because I want the trees, I don't want somebody raising bees in my park strip. That's probably not a good thing. But I think there needs to be some vegetation. I, sorry, but I don't want my town to turn into what the town you previously mentioned. I don't, I don't care, and I'm not saying this to doom, but I don't want to turn into a heat wave where everybody puts, gets rid of all of the sod, and all the trees, and all the brushes, and all the shrubs. And we've talked about that. And that worries me, if we just leave it open and start paying them money to take the lawn out. They'll do it.
That's why I think, that's why I think this street tree plan makes a lot of sense if we're going to move in this direction.
And that's, I, I agree with that, but I think they need to be able to be able to be a part of this so that they can, because I'm sure there's some of them that would like to reduce their water, theirselves, because that's money in their pocket, as they reduce their use of their secondary water, pressurizing, and stuff like that.
We already have the street tree requirement in the multifamily residents, part of the ordinance.
Single family.
Yeah, so the single family, right?
One, some, something I just thought of. If somebody chooses to, to change their landscaping, is there, is there a building permit requirement for that?
No, no building permit, no inspection, nothing like that. And as I understand it, adopting the standards that would be consistent, or regulations that would be consistent with the district standards, that wouldn't need to change at all.
Yeah, you're correct. There's no, no requirements, and in fact, there's not a city in the state that requires building permits to be pulled for landscape change. And we don't anticipate that that changes. And that's kind of why we run the incentive program, and we only pay out incentives if they put in, I mean, it has to be that 50% plant density. I mean, so we have a lot of requirements on our end to hopefully create attractive looking landscapes, and we work closely with them on that. But yeah, there's not, that may be the future, but not in the near term.
Well, I think the direction you're, you're, you're headed here with more flexibility than, than maybe I thought initially, that, that if we were to pass something here, it gets, a lot of our residents, that you're right, are in the season of doing this stuff, and probably want to qualify, which, which is a great effort. I think the state's in the, in the right direction to do that, use a carrot, not a stick, and try to get us to do that.
To that, to that point, if somebody is starting their proposal right now, do we have to have the ordinance today before they would be able to start that? Or if they started it today, but we had the ordinance passed by the time they were finished, would they be eligible?
That's a little bit of a slippery slope, but we have, with cities that we feel confident are going to do the ordinance, then we've allowed people to start their, their projects, knowing that they don't get paid out. I mean, we have to make it very clear, look, it's, it's kind of on your own risk. But we'll go out, and what we'll do is do the initial site inspection. We'll go and measure their landscape. But they, they can't apply on the website until the ordinance is passed, and that's something that the state manages. And so they have like a, a list of cities that are approved. And as soon as the city gets on that approval list, then the switch turns on, and people can start applying. But what we do is, if a resident really wants to participate, we'll go out and measure their landscape and make sure that they're, they can start their project. And then as soon as the switch turns on, then they can go in and apply. We're pretty flexible on that.
So could we pass this with the thing saying we need to adjust our park strip requirements? Or do we need to table it and get that done first?
From my perspective, there's no preference. We'd be comfortable doing it. It, I would say this, that if, if you'd be comfortable with simply some type of vegetative requirement for the park strips, if that's kind of the one thing that you want to see before you act on it, I'm comfortable that we could have some options for you to consider in two weeks. I wonder also if we don't look at augmenting this document with some specific examples for park strips, something to, to try to encourage people to treat those differently. That would take a little bit of money. We'd go, you know, back to the same consultant group and have them zero in on that. I don't expect that that would be a big expense, but I think to do that right, we'd need some outside expertise there. This is not part of the proposed ordinance, so we could, you know, we could make that available at any point in time, and I don't think it would take long to do.
Our, our trees requirements are still the same, correct? So like, when I built my home, I had to have certain trees and stuff like that in the park strip. Has that gone away?
Is that city, or is that, or is that the development?
That's not, that's not changing.
That's not changing. I, I still have to put some trees in, and I still have to meet the requirements of the trees.
It depends on where your home is.
Right.
And whether you're in a home that has that particular, or whether you're in a development that has that particular requirement in place.
Then it's, that, that remains, because that's a developer situation.
Yeah, like Rick referred several times to that. We, we do have those stipulations, but we also have some projects where those stipulations aren't in place. And it wouldn't be hard, again, in my, I can't think of a, of a challenge to make that citywide instead of just by development type.
Now, Rick, we talked about, you said there's kind of two different things. There's the turf buyback, but then there's also funding available for new construction that meets these requirements as well?
That's correct, and it, it's, if it's a homeowner, actually, they apply in the same location, and they get paid 50 cents per square foot of what I'll call turf avoided. And so that's just to offset some of that cost for expanding your planter beds, or whatever you're trying to do there. If it's a developer, we have a home builder rewards program, which is what it's called. And typically, we're spending probably fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars per lot, or we're providing that incentive to those home builders to offset that cost. And it's based on a similar structure of that turf avoided.
What if it's the homeowner and the developer that apply for the same lot?
So what it would be is that the developer would apply, typically, this is what we see. The developer will apply for either the full lot, if the city requires the full landscaping of the full lot, or the front and side yard. That's the most common, and then the homeowner will apply for the rear yard. We track all of this so that it doesn't overlap what we call the project area. They can't apply for the same project area.
Then, most likely, and I think we talked about this, if it's the developer that's applying for that, that's just extra that they're then going to get, because they're putting in it, and they're just going to, they're still going to get the same cost, or same amount for that home as they would as if they didn't apply for it. This is now extra that they get back. It's not likely that they're going to pass that on to the, to the.
Yeah, and, and really what it is, it's designed to, one of the things that we want to avoid is a developer saying, this added cost is something that we have to transfer on to the homeowner. And by providing this incentive, and, and we've worked most closely with Ivory Homes. I think we've given them probably half a million dollars already, just in the last year and a half. They've kind of committed as part of this project that they don't pass that cost on to their residents, but there's not any way for us to guarantee, because who knows what goes into the price of a home behind the scenes, right? And so, but that's the thing, is we don't want, we want to take away their ability to say, well, it's these requirements that the cities are adopting that's putting a burden on to the homeowners.
Same thing they say currently about impact fees.
Yep.
Yeah, they don't.
But if, but if I'm that homeowner, I, I do want the, I want the yard, it'd be great to have the yard in. I'll pay you through the mortgage, through my mortgage price of the house, that yard's in.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm the, I don't know the business end of the shovel, that's the. Not Chad. Okay, I feel like we're getting to a, a motion either of adopting this, and then, and directing Dave to, to look at the, the tree, the tree part further for us, and come back with some information there, or if you're, you're more inclined to table it and have him get some of that information back. But again, I, I like the, I mean, I like that we have some people ready to go, and, and in Spanish, and do the right thing here, and I also like the flexibility that we have as a, as a city to be able to, to get this right. So I'd entertain a motion for, for this item nine A.
So if we made the motion to pass this right now, and I mean, this is a Vaughn question, and we added in that we wanted that language added, would that be sufficient, or?
Just make sure you give enough specificity to Dave to know what he should add.
And then would we have to repass that once it's done, or that would just?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
As long as he does it, and it conforms with what the motion provided, he'll be fine.
And if he doesn't, what happens to him?
Yeah, just going to follow up with Dave.
So the things that we want added are plants, tree specification for the park strip.
This park strip.
And then defining, better defining of the side and front yard.
Yeah.
Correct?
I think so. Are you good with that? Are you, Jesse?
I think so.
That's where I'm at, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And undeveloped space was the other thing? Okay, make sure I get it all, so if I miss anything.
Don't screw it up.
And if you ghost me like you do Shane, then it's all over. I move to approve the ordinance to amend Title 15 of the municipal code for water wise landscapes requirements with the following additions. Tree requirements for the parking, park strip, plant or vegetation density and requirements for the park strip, along with examples, and then better definitions of the front and side yard. What was the last thing?
What's the last thing you said?
And then undeveloped landscape area definition.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Any questions on that motion? Because.
It was very complex.
Yes, it's a complex one, it's a good one. Roll call vote, Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
And Councilman Euler?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you.
Appreciate all the help, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for answering all the questions. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you, thank you staff for all your help there as well, and good discussion up here. Council moves us to item nine B, the Chris Jansen easement agreement accord and satisfaction.
Okay, some time ago, when we were building out our pressurized irrigation system, we needed a water line to come. We needed a water line off the bench over by the cemetery through a property, through the Chris Jansen property, there's a little 12 on it. Anyway. All right, well, so right here is where the water line was needed. We went to the Chris Jancens, we got an easement for that, we got it for free. And that was great. And then we ended up going out on a water main break, right on this property, a water lateral break. And we realized we had a water service lateral there that was not metered. And so we reached out, this was 20 plus years later, and, and the people who went out to the Chris Jancens, and were involved with that negotiation way back in the day. So we went out and said, hey, how come you have a water service that's not metered? We probably need to back bill you, and, and, and they're really nice about it. They said, oh, we, we gave that easement for free, and, and we were going to get unmetered water as a result. The people who made that deal are not really physically well, or the one isn't physically well. And so we didn't really have a way to verify that. So, so that being said, we believed him, and, and so we've worked out this accorded and satisfaction to kind of memorialize things, and to, to not make it be a blank check on water. We are allowing him a sufficient amount of water to, to do what he needs to do there, and, and, and doing what we feel like is the fair thing for giving an easement, which probably had some good value, and, and this did bisect his property. And, and so we feel like this is really a great opportunity for us, especially since we likely will need this property someday, a long time from now, but someday, for road connection. And so we wrote in there that when they're ready to sell, sell, they'll give us the first right to purchase that land at appraised value. And so there's some good things in this agreement that we think cleans things up and, and is fair to the, the resident.
You're talking a new road up from River Bottoms Road to Third East, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Mr. Thompson on this one? If not, I entertain a motion for item nine B.
I move to approve the Chris Jansen easement agreement accord and satisfaction.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Item nine B is approved. Takes us to item 10, to adjourn to redevelopment agency. I would entertain a motion to do that.
Motion to, motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency?
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in redevelopment agency, where we are.
Where are we?
Board people, Tara? Are we board members now in RDA? Entertaining a motion from a board member to approve the RDA minutes of May 2nd, 2023.
Motion to approve consent, RDA consent minutes?
Motion made by board member Argyle?
Second.
Seconded by board member Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
The minutes are approved, the RDA public hearing.
All right, so the, the purpose of the RDA entity is to provide funding sources to encourage economic development on areas that are distressed or maybe underutilized. And within the RDA, there's multiple different areas that we have set up. These are the different areas, and you can see the tentative budget there of 2.2 million. Yeah, so if the public has any questions, or if you have any questions about this part of the budget, Seth and I, and maybe Dave and Vaughn will be happy to answer them.
Perfect, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the RDA fiscal year 2024 budget.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by board member Argyle, seconded by board member Beck. To go into public hearing, all in favor, say yes. Motion made by Board Member Argyle, seconded by Board Member Beck to go into public hearing, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're in RDA public hearing, anybody want to speak to the RDA budget 2024? If not, I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Board Member Argyle, seconded by Board Member Cardon to go out of public hearing, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any more questions on the RDA budget for Jordan Hales?
Jordan, could, I just have, could we, somewhere in there, could we move a little bit of that money to improve that outhouse she keeps showing us?
I don't know where that's located. It was a, it was a free-to-use picture, so.
Distressed.
Oh, there we go. I, I'm not sure, I just know that picture you didn't have to pay for to use, so that was the one that worked for me.
Looks like out by Cove Fort or something, right?
I'll, I'll make a motion if that's, no questions.
Okay, any questions up here? Again, the public, this is the section, RDA redevelopment agency, portion of a budget, pretty important economic development piece of the city here. So yes, any, you, the, the public hearing will be over here tonight, but reach out, we don't pass this, we don't pass this budget, no action on this, as well as the final budget, right? Or is there action?
Nope, correct, we'll, we'll have these for adoption next, next council meeting. So today's just gathering information. I think it's worth mentioning that the funds for any of these projects come from within the project area itself. They're, they're self-generating areas, so no, nobody is paying into them from outside of the project area. So most people don't, don't know what these are, and really don't have a connection to them, because they don't live within them. These are typically business areas.
Business areas that are gathering that revenue.
Yeah, growing, changing, re-evolving, things like that. I think I made a new word.
Okay, they, let's see, so reach out if you have any questions public about that. It takes us to item 13, to adjourn to local building authority.
So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Argyle?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Euler to adjourn to Lo, LB, local building authority, the LBA. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're in local building authority, LBA consent, the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Beck?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Argyle for the minutes approved, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, the LBA public hearing.
All right. So the local building authority is the owner of some of these buildings. And then the building authority leases the building back to the city. So the LBA has built this building, Library Hall, and is in the process of building the new SFCN building, and then leasing those buildings back. That lease payment coming into the LBA is then used to pay the debt payment for the bonds that built the buildings. Yeah, so again, happy to answer any questions from the public or yourselves.
I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for LBA.
So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Euler, seconded by Board Member Cardon, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're in LBA public hearing for fiscal year budget 2024. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this? I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Cardon, seconded by Board Member Argyle to go out of public hearing, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're out of public hearing for this, any questions? Okay, any questions public, please reach out. We'll, we'll, we'll look at this again when we approve the overall city budget. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to reconvene back to city council meeting.
Motion to reconvene back to city council meeting?
Second. Motion made by Board Member Argyle, seconded by Board Member Euler, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're back in city council meeting, where we are council members. Any, anything else that needs to come before this body, before adjourning to closed session?
Okay, I move to go into closed session for land transaction.
Do, uh.
Do both of them?
Land transaction and personnel.
Personnel?
Yeah, we don't need litigation.
I move to go into closed session for land transaction and personnel.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to adjourn to closed session, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.